Good afternoon, everyone. This afternoon's meeting is public hearing two from our February 13th meeting. Thank you very much. And for those of you who have packets, it's page 29 in the agenda. So I want to call the meeting to order. And the first hearing is to conduct a quasi judicial hearing for a special use permit for a mini golf facility.
Madam Mayor, if I may, good afternoon, Mayor and Council and members of the public. As you indicated, this is a application for a special use permit. Therefore, we will conduct a quasi judicial hearing. As you indicated, the applicant is entitled to a fair and impartial decision-making body and it is the applicant's burden of proof to prove through relevant competent and substantial evidence that their application meets the criteria of the code. I need to ask the council as a whole a few questions before we get started. And again, these questions are aimed at ensuring that we have an impartial decision-making body. So has anyone on the board made a site visit to this subject property for this application for the purposes of assessing this application?
No.
Has anyone, does anyone on the board have a financial interest in the subject matter of this application?
No.
Has anyone on the board had any ex parte conversations with the applicant? And by ex parte, it means conversations outside the context of this hearing about the subject matter of this application?
No.
Has anyone had any ex parte contact with any member of staff about the subject matter of this application? Okay. Does anyone on the board have either a fam, close family, business, or associational relationship with the applicant?
No.
No.
Can any of you think of any reasons why you can't be fair and impartial and base your vote this afternoon solely on the competent, relevant, and substantial evidence that's brought forth during this hearing? Right? All those who wish to provide testimony must first be sworn in. They will be subject to cross-examination and to questions from the board. The order, we will go in, we will first hear from Mr. Kirkland on behalf of the town, who will introduce the item. He will be subject to cross and questions from the board. Then we will hear from the applicant. And then we will hear from all those who have been sworn in who wish to speak on the matter. As a clearinghouse, if it's not the applicant and it's not Mr. Kirkland, I'll ask a few questions about whether they have legal standing to provide testimony in this hearing. Are there any questions of the board for me before we get started?
No, sir.
All those who wish to provide testimony, this is the special use permit application, the way it reads in the agenda packet, for a proposed mini golf establishment located between Southeast 58th Street and Southeast 59th Street.
I need to swear you or you need to affirm. Do you prefer to swear or affirm? Either way, okay. If you complete your hand on the Bible, left hand. Okay, then just raise your right hand. And this will be for the both of you. Usulely affirmed that the evidence you give to the town council during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
No video.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kirkland.
So as we just heard, you have a special use permit, quasi judicial hearing in front of you for a mini golf. The applicant is Mr. Rafi Adi. He has applied for a special use permit for a mini golf within the community business zoning district. The proposed mini golf is located on a parcel that goes between Southeast 58th and 59th Street. Tax parcel ID is 250AG00809. The proposed mini golf is approximately 18,590 square feet. And here we have the parcel, it's kind of highlighted in the teal, it's the one right in the middle of the screen. The red color indicates the community business zoning district. There's also some community recreation, an R6, R7 zoning as well on the parcel, or adjacent to the parcel. So as your attorney just mentioned, in a special use permit, the applicant has the burden of producing competent substantial evidence pertaining to establish the facts and the conditions. The Court of Appeals has approved four general standards for considering and approving special use permits. We also have some that are included in our ordinance. If you look in page 30 of your agenda packet, that is the beginning of the town council's responsibilities and action that they can take regarding a special use permit. Section 4.9.3.6 covers the standards that are included in our ordinance. I'll go ahead and cover those for you briefly. First, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. That the special use will be in harmony with the existing development and uses within the area in which it is to be located. The establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for use as permitted in the district. That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, parking, or necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Public accesses shall be provided in accordance with the recommendations of the town's land use plan and access plan, or the present amount of public access and public parking as exists within the town now. If any recommendations are found to conflict, the system requiring the greatest quantity and quality of public accesses, including parking, shall govern. And then finally, the proposed use will be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, and other plan, plans officially adopted by the town council. So those are the criteria that the applicant must meet in order for a special use permit to be granted by the town council. And I believe that concludes my slides. If you have any questions for me, otherwise, we'll have the applicant come up and present their case.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Sir.
Mr. Kirkland, how many slides were on that total?
Four, if you count the title slide.
Would you like to introduce, well, let me back up. Pages 29 through 47 of the agenda packet appear to be the materials associated with this application. Would you like to introduce those into evidence as Exhibit A?
I would.
Or Exhibit 1? Okay. And sir, please help me pronounce your name.
Ralphie.
Ralphie. Mr. Ralphie, would you, do you have any objections to the agenda packet coming into evidence? Madam Mayor, I recommend we receive into evidence without objection pages 29 through 47 of the agenda packet as Exhibit 1. Mr. Kirkland, your four slides that you just prevented, presented to the council and the public, would you like to introduce that as Exhibit 2?
I would.
Mr. Ralphie, do you have any objections to that? Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept those four slides into evidence as Exhibit 2 without objection.
Excellent. So be it.
Any questions of Mr. Kirkland from Mr. Ralphie? Any cross-examination? Any questions of Mr. Kirkland from the board? Kirkland?
Questions for the applicant. I presume he's, he will be next.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Kirkland, just for the record, what's your title with the town?
I'm the planning director.
Right. And as planning director, you're familiar with this particular application?
I am.
And you're familiar with the section that you just pointed out? 4.9.6 through 4.9, excuse me, 4.9.3.6 through 4.9.3.6.8, which are the criteria that must be met to issue a special use permit?
I am.
Based on your review of the materials submitted, have you been able to ascertain whether this application meets that criteria?
Not based on the information submitted, no.
So as the planning director, you cannot testify that, in your opinion, the application as submitted meets that criteria?
No, not based on the information submitted.
Know that it doesn't meet it?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Ralphie? And sir, if you would just identify yourself by name and your relationship to the property and this application.
My name is Rafi Adi. I'm a business owner at Oak Island. I've been here for about 10 years. I own the Beach Life Resort Ware. I also own the whole, from 58, 5801, East Oak Island Drive, that whole shopping center. I own most of that shopping center and all the land that's in the back. It's roughly two acre, two and a half acres in the back that, right now, is undeveloped land.
Is that the area, I don't mean to interrupt you, is that the area subject to this?
Yes.
Application?
Yes, sir.
Roughly two and a half acres?
Two and a half acres, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The undeveloped, undeveloped part, yeah. So we just opened up a, an ice cream shop last year, an arcade and ice cream shop. And we wanted to accommodate, we've got, we had a lot of kids coming in and asking, what else are we going to have to play with? So we got together, we thought, we thought a mini golf would be, would be nice. This mini golf is going to have a theme that is a sunken ship. And the buried treasure is going to be candy to accommodate the candy store. Other than that, I really, I really don't have any more, anymore to tell. I think, I think it'll be a nice addition to, to that area. Please, I'm ready for anybody's questions.
I have questions, I'm sure you do, Mr. Bock.
Thank you. The, the land currently is fallow, correct? Undeveloped?
Undeveloped, yes, sir.
Yeah. So theoretically, this would be something that would be desirable. But I'm finding a lot of details absent in your proposal. So I'm going to run through a quick list of what I would need to see. First of all, that property across the street are condominium residences, you're aware of that, of course. So in a way, it does impact those folks, those owners. So I'd like to know more about the lighting plan that you're talking about, especially as it is designed not to impact those people who live across the street. I don't see any information on that. I'd like to see information on the plan for signage. And again, you're on a major intersection which abuts residence, residential development. I'm wondering whether your parking will be adequate for the traffic that is likely to come to this attraction. And while we're on that subject, I'm wondering whether there has been a traffic study to consider how vehicle traffic will be handled in what will become, frankly, a more congested area if your project is successful. I'm also wondering about noise and what kind of controls there'll be on noise. And while we're on that subject, I'm wondering about hours of operations, well, again, bearing in mind that there are residences nearby. I'm wondering whether or not the, the sketch that you have, well, illustrative is not a site plan engineered signed map. So some of the detail about the architecture, how big some of the artifacts, I'll call them that, are going to be on the holes, also unknown. So from my perspective, it's an intriguing idea, but there's a lot of detail that we would need to be supplied with before we could consider moving forward. That's solely my opinion. And I yield to my colleague, Mr. Kraft.
Before I start, can you expound on some of those concerns of Councilman Bock?
As best I can, yeah, on some of them, yes. As far as lighting, it's, it's going to be minimal lighting, and I can, I can show you foot candles at a later time if requested. That could be contingent upon approval with, with the city. As far as parking, it's two and a half acres, that's, that's bare land right now, so there's going to be plenty of parking there. I'm sorry, you, you asked a lot of questions, if you could.
Signage?
Signage. Signage, yes. We have, I think, I think on 58th Street where the, where the ocean is, that, that's where we want to put our, our main sign, our freestanding sign. There's a breezeway from, we, we opened up when we, when we built the Beach Resort Ware last year, we opened up a breezeway to have, to have traffic, because it was always congested at the front of the shopping center, so to have some, some of the traffic flow. And, and, and we have rear parking there at this time that wasn't required by the city, but we did it on our own, just, just to let the, the customers have a better, a better time of accessing.
Like overflow parking for the Beach Life and the Candy Store.
Beach Life, the Candy Store, the Amsterdam Life, and the other, the other shopping, the other, the other stores that are there, it's sort of shared parking, so anybody, anybody's allowed to work there.
This land is between 58th and 59th, is?
Yes, sir.
Is ingress and egress on both 58th and 59th?
Yes, sir.
So they can?
They can flow, they can go from one side to the other, or vice versa. Yes, sir.
And come in from either side?
Yes, sir.
And height-wise for your, you said it's going to be a, a ship theme?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so of course, there's a 35-foot requirement here in the city, and we're not, we're not going to be, I wouldn't think that it would be more than 10 feet, but I, I mean, that's something that I, that I can tell you at a later time. We haven't really done the preliminary of exactly what's going on. There's a few, there's a few ideas that we have. But of course, of course, we'll have to get approval from the city with any, anything. Now, in the future, if this, if this goes well, in the future, we were thinking, and this, this is not something that I'm asking for today, I'll come back and, and request it the next time, we want to do an aerial park above, above the, the mini golf. So with that being said, then we're going to keep, we're going to keep the down, the bottom floor to a minimal height, so we can have, so we can have that aerial if, if that would be approved at a later time.
So you're implying that possibly a maximum 15 feet would be a safe guess?
I would, I would say, I would say that's very safe, yes, sir.
And back to what Mr. Bock asked about, I'm sure the people at the condominiums are vacationers in the, in the summertime, and that would probably be very good clientele. Hours of operation-wise and noise level-wise, I think on weekends, it's 11 o'clock, and during the week, it's 10 o'clock. Is that within your parameters also?
The store is open until midnight. All the, all the shopping center, more or less, is open until midnight. There's also a restaurant on the, it's not open yet, but there's a restaurant on that, on the, on the 59th side, which, which they have music at night as well. So we're not going to have anything, I, I don't feel like there's going to be any, any problem with noise. But again, if you see it fit for me to, to, to close before the 11 o'clock hour, I mean, that's, that's fair enough. I don't mind doing that.
Anyone else?
I just, my questions were related to the, to the noise ordinance, because you do indicate in your presentation, audio effects around the mini golf. I certainly don't want to dictate your hours of operation, but I would just suggest that you understand our noise ordinance, how it changes at 11 o'clock. And if you do operate till midnight, since the other shops are open till midnight, like, I don't know if you're going to have simulated cannon fire or something like that.
No, no, no.
We just want to measure your audio effects at the mini golf to make sure they don't exceed the ordinance.
Very good.
Otherwise, you just get a bunch of phone calls, so.
Worse.
And to your point, the restaurant on the corner, you know, they're open late as well, so.
Which restaurant?
Pirate's Steak, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. They're working very hard to try to reopen this year.
Yes, they are working very hard.
There's also the Thai place that's going in on the other side, where Venus used to be.
Noodles and what used to be noodles and.
So my questions, Mr. Adi, are about flooding. So that's the corner by the beach where it makes the angle, is an area that floods dramatically during even the slightest rain. Have you considered any accommodations such as where possible areas that you would asphalt or cement be permeable to help control, or any other measures that you would consider to help with the flooding in that particular area?
The other businesses that I own, where, exactly where, where we feel that there's, there's flooding, we, we put French drains around it. We, we fill it up with rock bed, and then we put a, we put a corrugated pipe under, underground, and we fill it up with, with rock again, and, and that, that helps, that helps with stormwater. As far as the mini golf is concerned, we are going to develop that whole property. And when that property will be developed, the two and a half acres, of course, there's going to be, there's going to be stormwater there. I mean, that, that, when it's, when we deem it necessary, then that's when, when, when it'll happen. I think now for the, for the mini golf part, I don't think it'll make such a big impact. But again, I'm, I'm open to, to suggestions. If, to, to dig around it and put, and put a French drain is not, is not a big deal.
No, but I'm afraid that would be insufficient. So we're talking about flooding that even goes under those residences, the multi-unit dwellings that are there, such that, you know, the, the water comes up considerably, and at times, that corner is not navigable. So you're taking what is a very permeable surface over a sizable piece of land, and would possibly making a good portion of that impermeable. My question of you, would you be willing to work with our stormwater staff in developing a plan so that you don't increase the flooding as an issue, but would rather put the measures in that would help to abate that from being a further problem?
I would, I wouldn't mind speaking to the, to the city about it, but I do want to, I do want to be clear about something. This shopping center, we didn't buy it bare land. There was, there was a, there was, if, if you remember, there was a, a garage over there on that, on that piece of property. So all of that was, at one time, imperious. And at this time, it's not, because we, we tore it up.
Is the concrete gone that was there for the parking lot?
There, right now, it's, it's a gravel bed. It's not, it's not, it's not even, it isn't concrete right now, but there was that whole back property.
I, I remember it very well.
That whole two and a half acres was.
It actually had a concrete parking lot, didn't it? Okay. Okay. My questions are for Matt.
So anything you could do in that regard, and would consider doing, including a gravel?
Sure, if it's.
Gravel parking, and, but I'm afraid that the French drains that I would put in at my house, for instance, would be insufficient for that large of area, and especially one so prone to flooding.
So what, yes, when, when we, when we are going to develop the entire property, there's going to be a, a stormwater, we don't want to have flooding ourselves, so we're not going to shoot ourselves in the foot. So when we feel that it's necessary, we will certainly accommodate. And if you feel that we need to do something, then, then I'm, I'm open to, to suggestions. It's not, it's not.
Yeah, that would be up to our stormwater staff.
Exactly.
And it would be something that perhaps would have to go in, in advance of, you know, your building up from that property. So I appreciate your willingness.
Yes, ma'am.
Those requirements would be, before he could ever get any sort of development permit, he would have to meet all of our stormwater, all the town's stormwater and development regulations.
Which would include signs?
Correct.
And noise?
Correct. And height.
Parking.
And parking.
And pedestrian safety.
Are the signs going to be illuminated? They're going to be standard signs?
They'll be illuminated.
Okay.
Mr. Eads?
If there's questions, Mr. Kirkland, I have some observations I'd like to make at some point, but I don't want to interrupt the flow. I'm taking notes on the questions expressed by council.
Any other questions by council? Of, for Mr. Adi?
No.
No.
You're good. Mr. Eads?
Mr. Kirkland, could you come back up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Adi.
Thank you.
It sounds like an exciting project.
Thank you.
While Matt's walking, Mr. Adi, thank you for your patience the other night, four and a half hours, and not having your chance to talk. Thank you for your patience. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your patience.
I go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, mayor. Mr. Kirkland, when we're looking at Code Section 4.9.3.6 through 4.9.3.6.8, we've already established that's the criteria.
That's correct.
And many of the questions the council had, and I'm just going to go down through a list, there was a question about lighting and a lighting plan. Did you hear that?
I did.
And there was no lighting plan submitted with the application?
There was not.
If a lighting plan was submitted with that, help staff assess whether the criteria is met?
It would.
Okay. Parking plan, I understand that there's some, there's a depiction of a parking area, but that doesn't show, that I can tell delineated parking spaces, or how many would be designated to this particular application. Would a parking plan be something that would assist staff to determine whether the criteria was met?
It would.
Right. Hours of operation, I didn't see anything, and I could have missed it, anything in the application that specified hours of operation at what times of year? Did you, did you see anything like that?
No, sir.
That's something that, in, in general, is that something that an applicant would submit?
Depends on the application. We certainly don't have a development regulation that would stipulate hours of operation for a business.
And I, I would just note that the town, to the extent hours of operation bears on the criteria, could make that a condition.
Correct.
Sinage, you heard the questions about signage, both signage itself, and then whether it's going to be lit signage or whatnot. There's nothing in that, is there anything in the application that addresses that?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
For staff can assess the criteria of signage, because there's nothing in the application.
That's correct.
The height questions, you heard that?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Anything in the application that depicts a maximum height for any structure?
To my knowledge, no, sir.
Okay. The, the drainage, flooding type questions, anything in the application that shows any type of stormwater plan or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. And then I would just ask you again, but the signage included questions about lighting and nothing in?
No, sir.
Okay. And there's nothing in there about the anticipated type of non-ambient noise would be generated?
It's not a development criteria, but no, sir.
But it does bear on?
Sure.
Harmonious, et cetera. And I think we all can agree that we've been to various putt-putt places that do have cannons or?
Yeah.
Other attention-getting.
Get a hole in one.
Where I'm going is, and Madam Mayor and Council, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but it just seems to me that there's a lot of open-ended questions here that the applicant is willing to address. So we could do it one or two ways. If the board's inclined to want to see that information before voting, we could hold this hearing open, have the applicant work with the staff to get some plans in place as part of the application, a modified application, to address these things. As I understand the evidence so far, Mr. Kirkland's opinion as the planning director is that he, as planning director, does not have enough information in front of him to give a favorable opinion that the application as submitted meets this criteria.
That was my question to Matt. So if?
I can, oh, sorry, I'm going to cut you off. And specifically, Section 4.9.3.6.6 that I covered says that the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Presumably, a site plan, including that information, is what I would need to be able to make that determination as a staff member. I can't say whether it meets lighting and parking requirements, stormwater requirements, et cetera, without actually having looked at some of those plans.
So, yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter is, it may or it may not be a good idea, the devil's in the details. We don't have any details. devil's in the details, we don't have any details. And subject to our planner recommending, and I can't possibly see how we could move forward, are you suggesting a continuance, counsel?
Well, you know, it seems that, Mr. Oddie, am I saying that correctly? Is amenable to working with staff, or at least he was amenable in his responses to the board's questions to address these concerns. If you don't feel like he's met his burden of proof today, instead of making him start all over, now, he can request that we go forward today and then we just, you vote however you vote. But if he's amenable to meeting with staff to refine his application to address these concerns, instead of having him have to start all over with a new application, we could recess this hearing with the understanding he's going to submit a modified application working with Mr. Kirkland's office to come back at a later date, so we're not guessing on these things.
Yes.
Because I would submit to you that if you have to guess on something, that's not substantial competent evidence showing that the criteria has been met.
Not only that, Mr. Eads, but we wouldn't, currently, we don't have enough information to even be able to submit conditions for that development piece. So we couldn't really do a quasi-judicial hearing.
It'd be the exception envelops the rule. I think to, my advice is if you were inclined to pass this tonight, you would have to put lighting conditions, parking conditions, hours of operation conditions, signing conditions, noise conditions. And I think it's best practice to address that on the front end. That way, the applicant has input on it and it's not putting the burden on the council to cobble together a laundry list of conditions to address these concerns.
Can we ask the applicant if he is willing to do that?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to get that on the record one way or the other. Any other questions for Mr. Kirkland?
Not at this.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Kirkland? Do you mind coming back up to the lectern?
One quick question. Mr. Eads, are you implying that we would establish a condition around the hours of operation of a business in our commercial district?
I'm saying that it's legally possible, if you index it back to one of these criteria, I'm saying, if I was sitting in your shoes, I personally don't have enough information right now to know whether one would be needed or not.
And to the best of your knowledge, have we insisted on any other commercial business whose permitted use requires hours of operations approval by a town council?
I don't want to mix my towns up here. Not as a condition, I think there may have been discussions about the applicant's stated intention of hours of operation, but I don't recall. The short answer to your question is no. As I sit here right now, I do not recall this council ever saying, you can only be open from this time to this time.
Then I certainly don't see a reason why we would introduce, for the first time in the history of our town, a permitted use that's required to maintain some hours of operation. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, that's not, I'm not reckoning, maybe I hit with too big of a bat on this one. I'm just saying that it appears, by my count, there's at least eight areas of questions that aren't answered in the application. Probably the least significant of which is hours of operation, although that could be, depending on what type of noise generation, traffic generation, parking and all that, that could be relevant to some other condition you might want to put on there. I'm not putting that in any particular priority, Mr. Martin, nor am I suggesting that there needs to be a condition on each of these items, but right now, to use a common parlance, we're shooting in the dark.
And then regarding the noise ordinance, I can't imagine that we would write into a permitted use that he would follow the noise ordinance when the noise ordinance is already on our books and enforced by our police department. If he's in violation of the noise ordinance after 11 o'clock, I mean, even if we make that a condition of use, he's still in violation of a current ordinance and the police department's going to respond. So I'm not quite sure of the benefit of trying to deal with that either in this permitting process.
Again, I don't think we need to, just because if you were inclined to issue a special use permit, whether it's this one or another one, that doesn't trump the enforcement of the ordinances on the books. I'm saying that the application as it sits right now, and to Mr. Kirkland's point, Code Section 4.9.3.6.6 reads, "The special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located." Not knowing what, in any more detail what the plan is, I don't see how you can weigh in on that, based on the evidence I've heard thus far, on whether that condition's been met by substantial competent and relevant evidence. So I'm not suggesting that the applicant has to come back with a decibel reader built into his plan. I'm just saying that these are eight areas the council as a whole appeared to want more information. We can't speculate, since this is quasi-judicial, you have to base your decision on the evidence. And if you're speculating, then by definition, you haven't seen substantial evidence that the criteria's been met. The applicant seems to be amenable to working with staff to answer some of these questions, and I'll ask you formally in just a minute. And that might be the best use of everyone's time, so we're not trying to cobble together, if you're inclined to grant this, a laundry list of conditions. Does that make sense?
It does.
Well, I think the question of whether or not we are going to regulate a business and its hours of operation is a question worthy of a full board discussion. I don't think we should introduce it here, but we should take it up because there is an argument for regulation that protects citizens and residences, that isn't a distraction, and so on and so forth. Insofar as working with our town planner, yeah, I think in deference to the gentleman who was here for four and a half hours, he should have the opportunity. But I do think that unless these conditions, these information gaps are filled in, this is not going to survive as a proposal, no matter how worthy it is. And on the point of noise, what I would say, Councilman Martin, is if there are speakers that are mounted or if there are exploding devices in the holes, it could be quite distracting for people, pedestrians and drivers on the roadway. Now, none of that is planned, but I'd like to see that in the applicant's submission, correct? I don't want to put, didn't you say that?
None of them is planned, no, sir. But I want you to understand, it's right in the middle of that shopping center, so there's at least 100 foot on each direction that...
But you're not planning on anything exploding?
No.
Or mounting speakers?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, no, that's a good question. I've got four partners, so I have to...
I didn't want to quote you inaccurately, that's all.
I will tell you what I would like, and you tell me if this is possible. I would like for you to give enough information to our planner, who is educated and certified, to be able to say to us that he has enough information to form an opinion as to whether this meets the ordinance or not.
Sure.
Would you do that?
Of course.
Then I'm fine with what Mr. Eads says.
You just said in one succinct sentence what I had been rambling on about for 10 minutes.
I was trying to help you there, Brian.
We can make a motion. Well, let me just ask Mr. Oddie this. Would you be willing to agree to recess today's hearing to give you time to meet with Mr. Kirkland and his staff to modify your application to address some of the questions you've heard from council?
Yes, sir. It's not going to happen this year because we already missed the vote, so I have...
Okay.
Planning for next year now, next season. So I have time.
Well, we could recess this until next month. I mean, I don't know how quickly you can get this information. I don't want to put any time constraints either way on either you or staff. I appreciate your cooperation, and it looks like you've been more than willing to cooperate with the concerns or address the concerns the board, the council's expressed. So instead of them voting on something which could be a denial, then you have to start all over again and pay another application fee, in fairness to you, to recess it and come back, I think it kind of helps everybody, if you're inclined to agree to that.
I'm inclined.
Now, you have the right to say, no, I want you to vote tonight.
Today was really just to get a feel if mini golf is welcomed or not welcomed, I mean, more than everything else. And I do, I'm not saying that that's what y'all were saying, but if I meet some criterias, I think you'll be inclined to giving me that approval, so yeah, of course.
So if we recessed this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, could you have that information to Matt before then?
I will do my very best.
Okay.
Mr. Kirkland would like to weigh in.
It's in weeks.
Yeah, let's move on from that.
Let's do May.
June.
At the earliest May or June.
It's not happening. Okay, hang on.
If he's got somebody who can put that together before they can get it back, it'd be quick enough to get it for y'all. Then we can figure out who that person is.
So what would you suggest?
Mr. Oddie, did you say that since you did not get an answer today, you're thinking now about 2024, so if we back it up one month, it's not going to hurt you?
It's not today. It's last month. Last month was the cutoff.
Okay.
And it got tabled for a month, so it was already off the table.
So if we were to ask you to get with Matt for our May meeting?
Sure.
And have your ducks in order?
No worries.
May or June?
If they could get the...
May. Mr. Kelly is saying May.
Let's do May and let the man get an answer.
May.
Need it that quickly, or are you saying that now you're waiting?
I'm going to see exactly what is asked of me, and then of course, I'm going to have the professionals work, and everybody's on a, everyone's busy, so everyone takes time to do anything, so.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to recess it until May, and then if the applicant and staff is not ready, we could recess it again?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Oddie?
Yes.
Okay. Well, again, I thank you for your cooperation and professionalism.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think the, I think the most prudent thing to do, given what we've heard, would be to recess this hearing until the May regular...
May 9th.
May 9th regular meeting, with the understanding that, to the extent it's possible, Mr. Oddie's going to work with staff to amend his application to address some of these things we've discussed tonight, whatever else staff may need to assess the application. Fair enough, sir?
Yes, sir.
Motion to that effect.
Motion to recess this hearing until the May 9th regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oddie.
Madam Mayor, could we get a motion to go into closed session? We had a closed session on the last month's meeting to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I didn't see your hand, sorry. It's unanimous.
At 6:00, we'll have our hotel meeting.
What we can do is, I don't think the closed session's going to take an hour and 14 minutes, so we can come back and go back in to open and recess the meeting until 6:00. Ms. Stites, you okay?
Yes, sir.
AKA boss lady.
All right, what was planned?
Closed session, come back, recess it till 6:00.
Take 40 minutes.
And then I can order pizza.
Thank you. No, I'll go get my pizza.
We're back from closed session and no action was taken. So we'll reconvene with our next public hearing, actually, public hearing one from February 13th. Mr. Eads?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As you indicated, we are resuming the public hearing that began on February 13th, 2023. This is a special use application. The record will show what it's concerning. I just want to go over again the ground rules, if you will. This is a quasi-judicial process. Therefore, you are confined to base your vote solely on the competent, substantial and relevant evidence adduced at this hearing and the previous hearing. We've already gone through, well, let me just ask it again, since it's been a few weeks. Has anyone made a site visit to this site for the purpose of assessing this special use permit application?
No.
Has anyone had any ex parte conversations with anyone associated with the applicant regarding the subject matter of this application?
No.
Has anyone had any ex parte conversations with any member of staff regarding the subject matter of this special use permit application?
No.
Right? You all answered in the negative last time, so I'll assume no one has developed a financial interest in the subject matter of this?
No.
Okay.
No.
And I'm assuming no one married into the applicant's family, so there's no family relationship?
No.
No business association with the applicant? Okay. Can you think of any reason why you will be unable to be fair and impartial and solely base your vote on the evidence adduced at last month's hearing and the resumption tonight? Okay, it's a matter of housekeeping. When we left off, there were two, three, five people that had signed up to speak at last month's public hearing. Am I correct about that, Madam Clerk?
I count six.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read you the ones I have and you add the next, okay? Mr. Tom Lowe, Mr. Steve Kennington, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I can't pronounce this, is it, well, I'll let you take a stab at that one.
We have Bianca Basil.
Bianca Basil, next one.
Wojciech Sabinski.
Okay. Mr. Edward Lovett, next. Is that correct? And then Chuck.
Either Dieter or Deaton.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, is that reconciled with your notes, sir?
Yes.
Okay. We received into evidence 10 exhibits at the beginning portion of the hearing. Ms. Richardson, you have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, one more matter of housekeeping. It's been brought to my attention, Madam Mayor and Council, that other individuals outside of this, these six people, Ms. Stites and I just identified, wanted to speak tonight. We agreed with the applicant that no additional people will be allowed to sign up and speak. Madam Clerk, the original public hearing was duly noticed.
Yes, sir.
So all those who would like to speak tonight, and I don't mean this callously at all, had the opportunity to sign up at last month's public hearing, in fairness to the applicant. We have agreed to only allow those people, those six people, to speak tonight. Ms. Richardson?
I don't know if you want me to do this now, Mr. Eads, or wait. With the information concerning the corrected traffic impact analysis, we found a typographical error shortly after the hearing was recessed, and on the following day, Mr. Stewart submitted the correct traffic impact analysis of Don Bennett. And what I would propose doing is substituting original Exhibit 9 of the applicant and making this Exhibit 9A. And that information was sent to me by email from Mr. Stewart to the town clerk, Ms. Stites, on February 14th at 5:11 PM.
Right, now, see, 9A, propose 9A.
Specifically, as is on the cover email, page five of the original TIA submitted the hearing had a 22,000 AADT. It's been corrected, it's not reported. And page 17 is revised in accordance with the February 13th, 23, testimony that there is no exiting movement from the entry-only driveway. It's not B parentheses 12.9, it is the letter, I mean, the numeral, number zero, or the typos that were addressed in the original TIA. Otherwise, it's the same in all respects.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Madam Mayor, I recommend we accept 9A into evidence due to the scrivener's or typographical error Mr. Richardson described in the original 9. To the extent there were objections lodged for the introduction of Exhibit 9, we'll assume those same objections apply to 9A. And again, I recommend we accept that as 9A. Anything else before we call the other six people that signed up? Mr. Richardson?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
And, Mr. Eads, I just did want to note for the record, too, that these individuals were sworn in at the last hearing, so.
I'll remind them that they're under oath.
First on the list, we had Tom Lowe, but, Mr. Eads, he had emailed earlier today and said that he could not be present, and he sent a list of questions and said he expected a written reply.
Okay. Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, I recommend that we do not allow that email into evidence. Unfortunately, Mr. Lowe's not here, but whatever testimony could be surmised from those questions is not subject to cross-examination, since he's not here. Ms. Richardson, you have anything you'd like to add to that, sir?
I concur with your opinion on that.
Madam Clerk, next person?
Yes, sir. Steve Kennington?
Mr. Kennington, before we get started, I need to ask you a few questions regarding your standing to provide testimony here today, and I'm going to give Mr. Richardson the opportunity to do the same. Again, for those of you who may not have been here last time, under North Carolina law, in order to provide testimony in a quasi-judicial hearing such as this, the law requires you to have standing, and to have standing, you must allege and demonstrate that you will suffer special damages distinct from the community at large. So if you would, if you give me the location of any property you own near this subject property?
Then yours property on there would be 144 North Middleton.
Approximately how far is that?
Three tenths of a mile.
Okay.
Half a mile.
And do you contend that if this SUP would be granted, you would suffer damages that are distinct and unique to you that aren't the same type of alleged damages the rest of the community would suffer?
Perhaps. I think it would be a safety issue. We already can't get out of the driveway there, and every car that goes to this motel would come by there twice.
Do you believe that safety issue would be applicable to everyone in the community?
Applicable to everyone on North Middleton.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, do you have any questions of Mr. Kennington? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
I don't know if I need to come up here, but.
You can put your stuff up.
I would just review my position that Mr. Kennington does not possess requisite standing based upon the same argument submitted in the previous hearing. The purposes of the night, I don't believe. Thank you.
All right, your objection and comments are noted. Mr. Richardson? Mr. Kennington, I'm going to let you proceed.
Thanks, sir.
You will be subject to cross-examination and to subject to questions from the board.
Yes, sir. It's really pretty common to me. I own property pretty much across the state of North Carolina. And, you know, I see developers come in, and they build, you know, massive projects, and then they leave. And the people of the community had to build bigger schools. I mean, they had to build bigger roads. The original proposal for South Middleton would have took care of this project, and nobody would have anything to say about it. You know, we originally, the state proposed to put their four-lane, the five-lane road all the way to Beach Road. And they were going to have turn lanes, where it merged, and it would accommodate this property just fine. Well, why can't the developers put the infrastructure in before they build the motel and then take the profit and leave? And then we're burdened with the cost of accommodating them for their profits. So, I don't know, that's kind of, I do own 16, I do reside at 1628 East Pelican Drive, and everywhere I go, I go by this project, and I've observed the survey marks, and I can kind of understand what's going on. So if we have a hurricane, the sirens go off, we have to evacuate. Evacuation is the bigger issue. If 200 cars try to leave this at one time, then how's my family supposed to get through there? You know, because I've been, I see, I've owned that property for 20 years, and in the past six years, I've been flooded four times. And there's substantially more water. My house backs up to Davis Canal. There's substantially more water in Davis Canal than there used to be. So flooding, we flooded last fall. You just had the blue, just had a high tide, and we flooded all the way across Pelican. So evacuation issues need to be addressed, I mean, as a permanent issue for the town, not just for this project. And I see the sewer being a problem for us to pay for. I don't care what the expert says. I don't know how you can really figure 32,000 gallons personally. And I guess that's about it. I don't really see where we owe these people a special use permit. We don't need to accommodate them. I don't see where we need to go out of our way for them to build it. In the last meeting, they discussed a liquor store, grocery store, what have you. Well, the thing about a liquor store or a grocery store, you don't have 300 to 400 people a day just staying in this 106-unit motel that's overcrowding or already overcrowded beach. So I just don't see where we need to accommodate them to be overcrowded. That's all I have.
Mr. Kennington, let me ask you just a few questions, and I'm sure Mr. Richardson, well, I'm not sure, he may have similar questions. Do you have any specialized training in the field of transportation?
No, sir.
Okay. Any specialized training in the field of stormwater management or flooding?
No, sir.
Any?
Other than I get tired of having to swim out.
Understood, but I'm talking formal, formal training.
I understand.
So does the answer to that question, no?
No, yeah, that's right.
And do you have any specialized training in the area of sewer capacity allocation and sewer capacity in general?
No, sir. I was just a part, I was just a citizen, and I seen the sewer system go $200 million over budget, and I seen the debacle. And I know we were told at the time, it's the biggest vacuum system in the nation, and it's been problematic since it was put in. And that's all I know about the sewer system, since I've answered your question.
Yes, sir.
I'm not an expert, and I said.
Thank you, Mr. Kennington. Mr. Richardson may have some questions for you now.
Here, you can use this when I step aside.
I'd rather y'all both be at the mic.
Candace?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Just kind of finishing off what Mr. Eads was asking, Mr. Kennington. Are you an appraiser? Are you an attorney?
No.
Are you an engineer?
No.
That's all the questions I've had.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Kennington, one moment, please. Any questions from the board for Mr. Kennington?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Bianca Basil. Bianca Basil, not present. Wojciech Sabinski.
That's been a while.
Edward Lovett.
And if you'll let the record reflect, Madam Clerk, that those last two individuals you called did not indicate they're in the audience. Do you have any questions? Yes, sir. If you would, state your name for the record. There is a record of these proceedings. It's not TV law. There will be a record. Could you state your name, sir?
I'm Edward Lovett. I live at 139 Northeast 36th Street.
Okay, and what is your nexus, if any, to this property location?
How close do I live to it? I live on the other side of Holly. I do not live near this project.
Okay, and again, under North Carolina law, to be able to provide competent testimony at a hearing like this, you have to allege and show what's called special damages, which are damages unique to you or your property that are distinct from alleged damages the rest of the community would allegedly suffer if this is granted. So do you contend you would incur special or distinct damages if this SUP is granted? All right, describe that for me, sir.
I'm the president and founder of the Davis Canal Marsh Cleaners, and I would love to talk to you about 10 minutes and describe all of damages that have been done to my life and to the life of volunteers and citizens of Oak Island from hurricanes and storm debris on specifically the Davis Canal.
Do you contend, and we're here for a particular special use permit application, so I'm trying to narrow, maybe I didn't ask the question clearly. Do you contend if the permit is granted and this development occurs, that you will suffer damages distinct from the rest of the community at large?
No.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
Well, based upon Mr. Lovett's testimony just now, that he does not live near the project, and he does not have any testimony to offer in terms of special damages that he would incur, I would ask that he not be allowed to testify because he lacks standing.
Madam Mayor and counsel, I know that we allowed several people to testify last month, but Mr. Lovett honestly, in his candor and honesty, said that he doesn't even contend he would suffer special damages, and I think it's black letter law in North Carolina that that person would not have standing under these circumstances. So I would recommend we move on to the next person on the list with Mr. Lovett's thanks. Thank you to you.
I thoroughly disagree. The Davis Canal Marsh Cleaners have worked effortlessly.
Sir, one moment, please. Madam Mayor, unless I misheard his testimony earlier, he doesn't contend he would suffer special damages. Under North Carolina law, that does not confer standing on him to testify at a quasi-judicial hearing.
It would have, he, I'm sorry, Edward, but you don't, you'd neither have standing nor would your comments count, so to speak. It's called bearing in terms of how this project is impacted. So unfortunately, we're going to have to.
It impacts the entire community and specifically the Davis Canal. I'm here to represent the Davis Canal, which the developers are attempting to build a development on the Davis Canal and on the wetlands right next to it. And there is nobody on this island that has spent more time and removed more storm debris from the Davis Canal than I have. I'm here to offer testimony as a representative of the Davis Canal, and I believe that my thoughts may be heard by a town council so they understand how important this section of the wetlands are. And I do believe I have standing to speak before you tonight.
Mr. Eads?
Madam Mayor, I'm not on the Court of Appeals, and I'm not in the General Assembly. I am a licensed North Carolina attorney, and my job is to advise this board, this council regarding the law in North Carolina. If you do not allege that you will suffer distinct injury or damages, special damages, then you do not have standing to provide testimony in a hearing such as this.
Counsel?
I have given hundreds of hours organizing volunteer groups to clean the Davis Canal. I am possibly the only expert on the Davis Canal here tonight, and I believe that I should be allowed to speak and to share with council important factors that they need to take into mind while making their decision whether to vote yes or no on this special use permit.
Does the applicant's attorney?
I'm still of the opinion that Mr. Lovett does not possess standing. I don't believe he comes close to possessing standing under the law that governs the ability of a witness to testify.
Thank you. Counsel?
Let me understand, counsel, that he lacks standing per the law, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the gentlemen are in agreement. However, in the previous portion of this hearing, we allowed individuals to speak. So are we now imposing this rule going forward? That's my question.
Well, my recollection is the previous individuals at least alleged they would incur damages. If I understood Mr. Lovett's testimony.
About 300 hours of my time, I have incurred damages.
Sir, I won't interrupt you, and I would ask for the same courtesy.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That is the distinction. Mr. Bach?
Fair enough.
If the council is inclined to hear Mr. Lovett, I will go ahead and tell you upfront that it is my legal opinion that he doesn't have standing, and therefore you cannot consider his testimony as to whether the evidence produced by the applicant meets the requisite criteria of the code. If you want to allow him to speak, I would just admonish you that under North Carolina law, those with standings' testimony is neither relevant nor competent.
I reluctantly do this, but, Mr. Lovett, given the nature of the hearing and North Carolina state law, we're not going to have you speak tonight.
So you will not allow me nine minutes to speak as an expert on the Davis Canal? You will not?
Legally, he has no standing. Okay. I apologize. Chuck, is it Deaton or Dieter? No, their attorney said he doesn't have standing. No, it's not that I don't want to hear him. It has nothing to do with. It's.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, let me just make sure the record's clear. Mr. Richardson, do you have objections to allowing Mr. Lovett to testify?
Yes.
And what is that objection based on, sir?
He does not possess standing. He said he doesn't live near the project, and he hasn't suffered any special damages, nor is he able to allege he suffers special damages distinct from the rest of the community.
And that's a sworn testimony.
Next person? Madam Clerk?
Chuck Deaton or Dieter?
I apologize for my decision, but it's, this is a legal process that has, that is bound by laws and procedures that counsel is bound to follow. No, I don't. I can't change state law.
Madam Clerk?
I don't think you need to bother the audience.
I called out the last name, and no one responded.
All right. Ms. Richardson, if you would like to do a summation or call any rebuttal witnesses?
May I have just a moment?
Can we ask a question? Can we take the place of someone that's on the list that's not here?
No, I'm sorry. That was a condition that we made at the, to recess the meeting to this date. No legal standing. No decision has been made.
May I approach counsel with a handout from my summation?
Yes.
Counsel with a E or a I?
Yes.
Do you intend to introduce this as an exhibit or as just argument?
This is going to the comprehensive plan that Ms. Rame spoke about.
Did we introduce that?
She did not introduce the comprehensive plan when she gave her testimony, but I cross-examined her on it without having the comprehensive plan in front of me. And I think, I think counsel, town counsel can take judicial notice of their own comprehensive plan that she was instrumental in. And I just want to go through that as part of my summation today.
Well, we'll mark this as Exhibit 10, I believe, for identification purposes, or are we at 11?
I think we're at 11.
If nothing else, we'll mark it as 11 for identification purposes. Proceed, Mr. Richardson.
At the prior hearing, well, first of all, good evening, Mayor, members of counsel and staff. Grady Richardson, on behalf of the applicant, for the special use permit. Grady Richardson, on behalf of the applicant for the special use permit, there should be, is there a, four pictures on your screen right now? Does anybody have that?
I heard...
We've got a...
That's what we have.
Bring it up.
What you see there is what we generally view here.
Mike?
Mike?
Mike needs to switch something up for you.
There we go. Okay. On your screen are pictures taken of Publix's development that you heard a lot about from both the applicant and the witnesses at the first hearing. And we're showing you this because this is what's permitted, one of the several uses that are permitted as a matter of right. You've got the supermarket and you've got the parking lot and the back area for loading and unloading. The next screen that you have are aerials of the footprint of Publix's. If you look in the top left quadrant, that's the outline of the Publix's parking lot and Publix's department supermarket store. The picture to the right upper quadrant is an actual picture of the footprint of the applicant's project before you tonight, and it consumes less than half of the footprint of the Publix's supermarket and parking lot. Because what they've done, my client has done, is put all of the parking up underneath the structure with a 13-foot clearance. On top of that parking deck is 22 net feet for retail and for the hotel that comes under the 35-feet height limit or satisfies it and does not exceed the 35-feet. And we're showing you that because of the, the smart design of the applicant and that it's not sprawl, it's not creating sprawl, it's not creating these ugly parking lots, it's hiding it away from the residents and from your visitors, and it's trying to achieve what we'll talk about in a few minutes with your comprehensive plan of smart growth, environmentally sensitive growth, aesthetically pleasing development projects that you'd like to see in your town that meets your needs that you've identified in your comprehensive plan. Down below on the lower-left quadrant is a picture of the Ocean Crest Motel and a fishing pier, recognizing that the rectangular portion running parallel to the beach burned down. But if you take the square footage of the Ocean Crest and you put this applicant's project on the same property, again, you're seeing how the footprint of our project is significantly less than the Ocean Crest Hotel or Motel's property is because of the design of putting it all underneath and maximizing the efficiency of the square footage to build this project and to keep the parking lot away from the visibility of your residents and your citizens and your visitors and making for an attractive project. Again, keeping the sprawl to a minimum and satisfying and staying within your zoning restrictions on height and density. The next project, I mean, the next slide is actually, if you take a, a cross-section which is shown in this red line from A to A, that cross-section is the street. As you're looking at the street, up above at the top of that picture are present-day structures on each side of this proposed project. Our project is the same height as the structures immediately to the left and to the right, including residential homes of the project. We are not exceeding the height. We are the same or less than the height of the current structures in place around the property. The last page of this is a sideshow, I mean, is a, is a side picture of what on the top, from the Elks Lodge, looking towards the project, what you would see, and on the other side with Third Place Eats, with the streetscape that's done, what you would see if you go down Third Street towards the marsh of the side of the building. Aesthetically designed, aesthetically pleasing, enhanced landscaping, enhanced buffering above and beyond what your Code of Ordinances requires. Do you have the electronic edition of the comprehensive plan or? At the past hearing, Ms. Jermaine talked about her role, and it was a significant role, with helping this town come up with its comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is extensive. I've got it all copied right here, but I've got it flagged, and the flagged portions I'd like to walk you through are in hard copy that I've handed out to each one of you. What should be behind the first page is where it has the public input. That's documenting how central to your planning process you engage the public to come up with your comprehensive plan that you would like applicants to be held to, such as the one before you tonight, and future applicants. The next page of the handout talks about the assets and the issues that the town has focused upon and your goals. We've highlighted a couple of things. Your public input, the purposes of this plan identify the top three assets in the town. The first one was the beach. An overwhelming 93% selected beach is one of the top three assets. And then further down, 34.8% of your respondents in your plan said that they were concerned about the appearance of commercial areas. Before I keep going, I'll remind council as part of this summation, with everyone that spoke in opposition at the last hearing, by my notes, every single person, including Ms. Jermaine, stood up and talked about how nice the project looked, how aesthetically pleasing it was. It all kept coming back to traffic, which we'll talk about in, in the last part of my summation, but I think that's important when you start going through the law and you're looking at whether or not a special use permit with substantially injured property values of the neighboring owners, whether it's harmonious or not. Of course, you didn't hear any competent evidence to rebut our appraiser and our experts, but it still shows you that at, at the core, everyone that got up talked about how lovely the project was. So now we go back to this page. Goal number five. Oak Island will consider the fiscal impact on the town and its citizens in all deliberations. This is bringing a fiscal asset that's gonna generate a tax base, it's gonna generate visitors, it's going to generate sales and use and occupancy taxes for the benefit of this town. We're the ones that are gonna be making the improvements to your sewer infrastructure to carry and take care of the affluent coming off of this property. You've, you've heard from our experts regarding the stormwater management of the on-site stormwater treatment that we're going to do underneath the building and around the building so as to eliminate it from going onto your streets. You've heard nothing to rebut that. Goal number six. Oak Island will support fiscally responsible expansions of its recreational opportunities. Here again, this applicant, in addition to improving the Third Street, has also built the observation decking and platforms over the marsh for members of the public to go and, and walk on it as they wish, to take in nature without harm to the environment and preserving and enhancing and utilizing the use and enjoyment of those natural areas that are so attractive for folks to come here and vacation and visit. We've also are building the sidewalks and making it pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly. We've got more than, more than is required for parking spaces, all of which is hidden up underneath the building itself. We're providing a splash pad for the public to come use, which is, as you'll see in the comprehensive plan, a specific use that the citizens of this town and your town council with, town council with this comprehensive plan identified as something you'd like to see. Goal number seven. That Oak Island will support fiscally responsible increases in its multimodal transportation opportunities. Next screen. What is a comprehensive plan? In this, you say that it's a long-range policy document with a particular time horizon, 20 years in the case of Oak Island. The plan will include an assessment of existing conditions, a summary of public input, projection of future needs for topics relating to land use and development, and a comprehensive listing of goals, policies, and strategies. Further down, while the comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document, it does provide guidance relating to future land use and development changes. That's the key. There's nothing about the comprehensive plan that jumps the tracks to require this applicant or any other applicants to meet something that is largely a wish list of this council as to what it would like to see. But despite that, as you'll see through the summation, this applicant not only satisfies your zoning ordinance, it definitely satisfies your comprehensive plan and your wish list that are identified in your comprehensive plan, even though that's not required of the applicant to get the special use permit tonight. The plan should be used whenever zoning decisions are made by the planning board and/or the town council. There we go. This council already, or the staff and the town, already made your zoning decisions that implements and takes into account this comprehensive plan. You already made the decision that in this zoning district, this use was allowed by, by way of a special use permit. You have already found that if the applicant meets its burden and showing a prima facie case by satisfying the zoning ordinance, that he or it, the applicant, is to get granted the special use permit. So we're not making any zoning changes tonight. We're not asking for legislative changes. You already made that previously and incorporated your comprehensive plan. The next page, you have your vision statement. Oak Island will be a community which preserves, protects, and enhances its natural and cultural environment, including shoreline access. We're doing that with the plan you've been tendered and seeing from this applicant. Waterway, again, we've got the, what I'll call the boardwalk, the pier and the decking that's gonna be open to the public with respect to Davis Canal. Beaches, dunes, water access, residential areas, and recreational opportunities for all ages and abilities. The town's unique scale and character will continue to provide a desirable place in which to live, work, and vacation. Multimodal transportation options, including efficient sidewalks, we're building those. Bike ways, we're building that, and roadway systems will provide, which we're improving Third Street, will provide for an accessible community. Economic development will be coordinated with preservation of the town's residential areas. On the next page of your comprehensive plan, you talk about, you identify housing unit by occupancy status. At the time of this comprehensive plan, close to 90% of the homes on Oak Island were identified as seasonal, not full-time residence. At the time of the comprehensive plan, close to 90% of the homes on Oak Island were identified as seasonal homes or rental units. The next page of the comprehensive plan over in the green box on the left, the 2014 North Carolina Regional Travel Summary provides a summary of the impact of visitors on North Carolina's coastal region. 36% of the visitors lodged at a hotel, at a hotel slash motel. As you go to the local economic drivers, we've highlighted this section. The vacation rental market supports overnight visitation for tourists to the town. A recent study sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Commerce noted that the average spending from an overnight visitor party in North Carolina is approximately $517 per visit. The average length of stay is 2.7 nights, and the average visitor party size is 1.9 people. Supporting industries such as food accommodations, hotels, and local shopping destinations are among the most popular for visitors to the island, and that's what this application is providing to the citizens of the town of Oak Island in accordance with its comprehensive plan. The next page, under existing conditions, based on community input, the areas of concern relating to the existing land use and development pattern for the town include the following. Number one, walkability of commercially, of commercial-oriented areas. On the premises, a hotel visitor will be able to walk without touching any of the streets, the retail that will be available on-site. Yes, if they wanna go access the beach, they will be able to access the beach across from it. They're gonna be here to visit the beach in all likelihood, right? They're gonna come during the main season. Chances are, their cars are gonna be used very little to at all when they're at the hotel directly across from the ocean and got, and they have this access right across from the hotel by which to go and enjoy the beach and to walk back in a safe manner on the sidewalks. Next plan, next slide. A golf cart transportation plan was created for the town in 2009. The plan was accepted by the town council but not formally adopted due to the unfavorable recommendations contained in the plan. Down further, golf carts shall not be operated at speeds greater than 20 miles per hour or alongside a public road or a street with a posted speed limit greater than 35 miles per hour, and shall not be operated on Oak Island Drive, Beach Drive, or Ocean Drive. Next slide. In the community business district, you specifically identified that the CB District is established as a zone in which the use of the land is for commercial and service uses for the surrounding urban market area. In promoting the general purposes of this article, the specific intent of this section is as follows. Number one, to encourage the construction of and the continued use of the land for commercial and service uses. We're coming to you tonight and the other day for satisfaction of that number one established purpose that you've identified in your comprehensive plan for commercial and service uses. Number two, to provide for the orderly expansion of such uses within the CB District as designated on the zoning map. We've done that. I've showed you just with respect to a supermarket. You heard all the stuff previously about the ABC liquor store and the bars that could go there as a matter of right. Those are things that we are eliminating with the sprawl of this unsightly parking deck and people going in and out of. They're not staying in a supermarket and spending a night there. They're not staying in a supermarket and visiting a restaurant there. They're going in, getting their groceries, and leaving. They are constantly dumping onto and getting off of your roads that you complain of or you've heard about traffic congestion. That's not what you have with our project here. The next slide talks about aesthetic enhancements. Investing in public realm improvements that encourage walkability. I mean, we, we are building piers for walking out and observing nature on the backside of this development. We're building sidewalks and pedestrian-friendly accesses to and from the beach. We're improving Third Street for the town on our own nickel. We're adding streetscapes, all of which you're talking about here, in addition to encouraging walkability, enhancing the visual interest of the built environment or hallmarks of desirable communities across the state. Next page. Talks about landscaping. Material need tends to soften the built environment while the reduction in parking limits the amount of impervious surface. Take, for instance, here. Your parking is underneath the structure, so you're not increasing impervious coverage by way of a parking lot. It's all underneath the structure. We've added, as you can remember, we increased the buffering, we've added significant landscaping in the proposed plan for trees and bushes and other native landscapes. Down at the bottom, it says that appearance of commercial areas was identified as one of the top three issues in Oak Island. Every single opponent that stood up and testified at the prior hearing, from my notes, from my recollection, talked about how wonderful a project this appeared to be. Then they would say they were concerned as to whether or not it would actually look like that. We have, I have, I have said it to you all previously, I will reiterate it now. That project that you've seen artistically rendered is exactly what my client intends to build and is willing to stipulate to that, so that there's no sandbagging or game of gotcha. We care about what we're going to build, and that's exactly what we are stipulating to building in an aesthetically pleasing way for the community and for the town of Oak Island as a whole, because, if you think about it, the nicer the project, the greater the chance that people are going to want to visit it and to stay at it and then have a nice vacation versus if it's not well-done. And if it's not well-done, it's not gonna have a greater chance of succeeding economically. Next page of the comprehensive plan. The primary component of street yard requirements would be the screening of the parking facility. We've completely screened it out from anyone seeing the parking because it's underneath the structure. And visual enhancement of the development, street trees would be included as part of the street yard requirement. We've done all that. We've submitted all that to... We've submitted all of that to you as part of our artistic renderings, all of which is native landscaping and enhanced buffering on the side yard than what's required under the zoning ordinance. Same thing where we achieve the enhanced buffer yard requirements between non-residential and residential development. Next page. You say, for public realm enhancements, thermoplastic crosswalk markings. We're doing that as part of the pedestrian improvements to this is what we're doing for the town in conformity with its comprehensive plan. Next page on parks and recreation. The needs that were identified by the town list out playground, kayak, canoe launch, and then it lists a splash pad. We're doing that. The kayak and canoe launch, I would submit to you that when that decking is built and Third Street is improved, I suspect that the town would be able to apply for improvements to make a kayak and launch pad if they wish, if the town wished to do so at some point in the future, or the canoes and kayaks, as they're meandering through Davis Canal, could find their way in and around the Third Street area to launch and retrieve kayaks and canoes. Next page, economic considerations. As part of the community survey, respondents were asked, what was the most important factor in your decision to live where you currently reside? The top two results were natural amenities and employment. The natural amenities, we are providing the piers on the back of the structure while preserving the environment but allowing the public to utilize it. Bill trips, kids, students, all can use it. John Doe visiting does not stay in the hotel, can still park on Third Street, get out and walk on the structures that we're building for the natural amenities. Plus, they can access the beach with the improved and enhanced pedestrian access and then employment. Take someone to work at the hotel and at the restaurant facilities and retail services onsite, so we're also providing future employment for folks to work at Oak Island at a nice establishment if this is granted under the town. Economic development strategies recommended are supporting an enhanced business district on the island, a diversified industry base on the mainland, and a natural resource-based economy that supports tourism and the preservation of the island's natural amenities. Honestly, I have no idea how anyone can come before this council and do it any better than what my client is offering to do for this town. They are going not only in satisfying your ordinance, they're satisfying your comprehensive plan. They are doing things on their own nickel that they're not required to do because they care about investing in this community and satisfying and providing this tourism that you're seeking and the preservation of the island's natural habitats. Next page on, under goals, the following 10 planning process goals have been heavily influenced by public input slash opinion that was received. Goal four, Oak Island will support improvements to its community appearance as an important tool for economic development and neighborhood preservation. Goal five, Oak Island will consider the fiscal impact on the town and its citizens in all deliberations. And goal six, Oak Island will support fiscally responsible expansions of its recreational opportunities. Next page, future land use. Zoning regulations shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. There you have it. Your CB District and this special use, you found were legislatively consistent with the CB District if we meet all the requirements under the zoning ordinance. Planning Director, Mr. Kirkland, the very first few questions way back at the beginning of this, I ask him, has the applicant satisfied all of the staff's requirements for submitting the special use permit? Answer, yes. Has the applicant satisfied all the technical specifications and requirements of the town's zoning ordinance for this special use permit application? Answer, yes. Is there anything that the applicant has not satisfied under the town's zoning ordinance to go forward on the special use permit application? Answer, no. That's the comprehensive plan and my summary of it. As you can see, every, every component of our application satisfies your comprehensive plan that's been flagged there despite what someone may have said. We'll talk about traffic. I've been doing this long enough to know that one of the main objections that I hear when I represent applicants, or as a reminder, when I'm wearing my town attorney hat for Sunset Beach or for St. James, and I have developers coming in, and I have opponents to those developers, or myself representing opponents to applications, I know that one of the things that always comes up is traffic. Traffic, traffic, and traffic. I lived here when there was one bridge on and one bridge off. That was the Barbie Bridge. Okay? I'm very familiar with how Oak Island, until recently, was laid out. As a deep dive into Mr. Bennett's traffic impact analysis, if we were to build a supermarket, and this is Mr. Bennett's study, Exhibit 9A, if we were to build a supermarket, another Publix on this property, which we could do without going through all this, it would generate 2,700 trips a day on your streets. Nothing that anybody can say to that. 2,700 trips a day. This project, per Mr. Bennett's sealed engineered traffic impact analysis study, this project will generate 1,700 trips a day at its most. A thousand trips less per day than a supermarket. Now, you're right. Did we open the door to the traffic concerns? Yes. But here's why. Coming into the hearing, I knew we would hear it. Mr. Stewart knew we would hear it. Our client knew we would hear it. And we also knew that the zoning ordinance and the special use permit does not depend on a traffic study. You heard that from Mr. Kirkland. There is no TIA traffic impact analysis that's required for purposes of our special use permit being granted. But we went ahead and did it because we knew person after person was going to come up complaining about traffic. So the only way to deal with that is to preemptively get out in front of it, lay out more money to try and satisfy and allay the concerns of the community, even though we're not required to do it. So we did that. And so what, the closest you have to anyone saying anything to rebut Mr. Bennett is Ms. Jermaine because of her involvement for the comprehensive plan. She is not an expert in traffic studies. She is not an expert in calculating peak hour trips. She's just not. Mr. Bennett is. But you look in, when you dive into what she said, and she's talking about general concerns with the traffic, it doesn't add up when you stack it up next to the expert's report and all that he put in there about the study and the trips. But here's the thing. The mere fact that we offered that and that there was a lot of complaints about the traffic means nothing for purposes of tonight's hearing and your consideration of the special use permit application. What do I mean by that? You, under your ordinance, nothing about traffic and traffic impact is supposed to come into your consideration of the special use permit because we weren't required to do it. And the mere fact that we voluntarily gave it is just our way of trying to satisfy whatever concerns are in the back of your head and members of the public thinking about the traffic is our way of preemptively snuffing that out with competent evidence from an expert. I don't believe it's something that can be considered because it's not required under your zoning ordinance. But at least if you do require, if you do take it into account, you know what Mr. Bennett said, and you know that he's the only person in this room who used to work for a city, who has all of that experience. You heard Mr. Eads question him about his experience and how many traffic impact analysis studies he's done. You've heard nothing opposing that, other than Ms. Jermaine talking about a comprehensive plan and her general concerns of traffic. But look at everything that this application satisfies under your comprehensive plan. Now, hopefully, in an effort not to lull you to sleep, I'm going to briefly talk about the standards here. Feel free to ask Mr. Eads, who I've gone and shared with him the things I'm going to highlight for you as to the standards for a special use permit. I gave Mr. Eads in advance of the hearing just tonight, Coats' Cannons on North Carolina Local Government Law, and it's entitled, What's a Scintilla? Recent North Carolina court decisions clarify quasi-judicial evidence standards. The author was Jim Joyce. And it talks about a special use permit. And on the very first page, this is the, this is the key. When a land use is permitted as a special use, the governing board has already made a legislative decision to allow the special use, provided the applicant shows the standards for that approval set by the ordinance will be met. Here, you as the board legislatively determined, when you made the CB District and you passed your zoning ordinance and you had your comprehensive plan, you legislatively determined back then that a hotel was allowed as a matter of right in the CB District provided it went and got a special use permit. You've seen or heard no evidence that the applicant is short on anything required by the town, staff, technical review committee, or otherwise, that we have not satisfied under your town ordinance. That means we have satisfied our burden of satisfying your zoning ordinance to get a special use permit. We have met our prima facie case by substantial material and competent evidence. We've offered up Appraiser Cal Morgan, Don Bennett for the traffic impact analysis. We've given you our stormwater and sewer engineer, and we've given you the architect, Mark Loudermilk. You've got the landscape design architect, Scott Stewart, and all of his credentials, all of which have gone above and beyond what's required of your ordinance based on substantial material and competent evidence. And as best I can ascertain, after I've distilled it all down since the last hearing, the concern was traffic. And that's not even a concern that's valid under your zoning ordinance. But no one offered up a rebuttal expert who was experienced and could qualify as an expert to rebut Mr. Bennett's traffic impact analysis. Why does that matter? Because once we meet our burden, then the burden falls on opponents to offer up substantial material and competent evidence to rebut or to oppose the application. And I would submit to you, you've heard nothing that comes close to that. You've heard maybe one person tied to the comprehensive plan that I just spent 15 minutes going through to show how our application is completely consistent with your comprehensive plan. One person talked about traffic. No traffic counts, nothing like that. And you heard other people talk about traffic and the intersection. If the second bridge hadn't have been built, how in the world would anybody ever get satisfied on traffic? I mean, if you want to talk about traffic, build another Publix on this property. That's going to be your traffic congestion. How many people are going to run to that supermarket on their way to the beach? On and off, on and off, on and off, going into the supermarket? And this eliminates that. So this, there's case, another case we have that I also gave Mr. Eads. It's the PHG Asheville LLC versus City of Asheville case. In that case, the applicant went before the City of Asheville Board and applied for the issuance of a conditional use permit, seeking authorization to construct a hotel in downtown Asheville. The City of Asheville Board rejected the application. It did so for two primary reasons. The city board members of Asheville, at the hearing, started inserting their own layperson questions to the experts that went above and beyond what was required of the City of Asheville zoning ordinance of experts that come in supporting a conditional use application. The second one was one witness talked about how there might be a traffic and safety concern at a nearby intersection near the property. The trial court reversed the City of Asheville and said to issue the permit because the applicant had established a prima facie case and had met their burden of getting that conditional use permit under the ordinance. On appeal to the Court of Appeals by the City of Asheville, the Court of Appeals affirmed the trial court's decision. Not satisfied with the two losses, the City of Asheville appealed it further to the North Carolina Supreme Court, and the North Carolina Supreme Court affirmed the trial court and the Court of Appeals. And I'm going to give you some snippets of the case law that this case established. Trial Court Judge said that the City of Asheville was getting confused on the standard, that the city council for Asheville had failed to recognize that the applicant had only a burden of production and not a burden of persuasion at the first stage of getting the permit. What does that mean? There may be some council members that don't like the project. We know that there are some people that don't like the project from the prior hearing, but that is not properly before the board for purposes of your consideration tonight. The law says, has the applicant met its burden of producing an application that satisfies your ordinance? And that answer is resoundingly yes. And so if I'm sitting here trying to argue, like I've done some already, trying to persuade you about the beauty of this project and its sensibility, that's really going beyond what your review is. Have we done the application in conformity with your requirements? And that answer is yes. Mr. Kirkland told you it is yes, and you've heard no evidence to suggest otherwise. On appeal, the Court of Appeals noted that Mr. Crozier's report, who was an appraiser, constituted material as well as competent and substantial evidence to show prima facie compliance with criteria three, which dealt with harmony and not injuring the values of the property next to it. And it, and there was nothing presented at the hearing to show that Mr. Crozier's analysis was unsound or utilized in an improper methodology. They also, the Court of Appeals also found the same thing happened with Mr. Dean, who was the engineer that was identified by the applicant. As you get into the body of the Supreme Court's decision on page 10. As this court has clearly held, the extent to which an applicant has presented competent material and substantial evidence tending to satisfy the standards set out in the applicable ordinance for the issuance of a conditional use permit is a question directed toward the sufficiency of the evidence presented by the applicant and involves the making of a legal rather than a factual determination. So ask yourself, has the applicant and all of its experts and all of the consultants and all of the stuff you've seen and your own comprehensive plan, have we put on substantial material and competent evidence tending to show the compliance with your ordinance? And that answer is a resounding yes. And that's your legal determination to make tonight, not a factual determination, because this is a quasi-judicial setting where you're the judges. You're the ones that have the equivalent of wearing a black robe right now and making a decision on the law, that's your law, your town's law. Have we done that? And have you heard any substantial material and competent evidence to rebut that whatsoever? At the end of the opinion on page 14, the Supreme Court said that we hold that the Asheville City Council made a legislative decision to allow certain uses by right in specified zones upon proof that certain facts and conditions detailed in the ordinance exist. What they're talking about there is what you've done here. You legislatively determined a hotel would be allowed in the CB District by way of a special use permit if the applicant meets your standards. The effect of making this decision was to bind the Asheville City Council to the use of quasi-judicial procedures and to exclusive reliance upon the substantive standards enunciated in the relevant provisions of its land use ordinance in determining whether conditional use permit applications should be granted or denied. The court then noted a prior case of Woodhouse, where a zoning ordinance specifies standards to apply in determining whether to grant a conditional use permit. in determining whether to grant a conditional use permit. And the applicant fully complies with the specified standards, a denial of the permit is arbitrary as a matter of law. As Mr. Eads would tell you, what that means is it's arbitrary and it will be reversed by the court because it's not following your zoning ordinance. I know that there are people who are scared, who have lived here. They're worried about development. I would submit to you, you have an example. This application and the materials that are submitted with it and the consultants that have been used with it will serve as a guide for future applications in this town as almost the standard by which others should be judged. They go above and beyond the bare minimum requirements. And it's still not good enough for some people. Coming into the first hearing, I was reading the post online about how it's going to be some gigantic structure. Couldn't be further from the truth. Maximum height's 35 feet, we're staying under it. We're actually giving up a floor of a property that could be developed to hide our parking so people don't complain about how visually ugly it is. So that it's all self-contained on as little of a footprint as possible. 30,000 square feet is the size of Ocean Crest. 30,000 square feet is the size of our footprint. Publix has larger footprint by twofold. We're half of that. And we're staying under your height limit with all the screening. I could go on, I've gone on long enough. I would ask that this council, respectfully I ask, that this council pass the application. It satisfies and exceeds all of your zoning ordinances, all of your technical requirements, all of your comprehensive land use plans, objectives, and goals. And if this hotel isn't going to be allowed as a special use in the CB District, what will ever be allowed as a hotel in your CB District under your zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan? Happy to answer any questions when you begin deliberating. If there's anything I can answer right now, I'll be happy to. Yes, sir?
Seven or eight questions. Not confrontational, more fact finding.
Yes, sir.
Either for you or Mr. Stewart, whoever I should ask.
Yes, sir.
Setbacks, Dolphin as opposed to Third Street. Did you put the front of the hotel facing Third Street due to setbacks or design?
I'll look, you can, Scott, grab the microphone there.
I'll just remind you that there's a, going to be a record of these proceedings. So if one person starts to testify, just if you would, for Madam Clark, identify yourself.
Scott Stewart, Demerits Company Landscape Architects. Originally, when we were looking at the conceptual plan, I thought East Dolphin Drive was the front yard. And Mr. Kirkland, when I met him in late September, early October, said, "No, we have to dig a little deeper in your ordinances, but the shortest dimension of the, of a commercial tract in the CB District is the front yard." So Third Street, Third Place East is the front yard with a 20-foot setback. So after designing the project with the front yard, thinking it was East Dolphin Drive, we spent another month or two reconfiguring everything. And it actually turned out to be an asset because then we said, "Well, let's use the extra land we had on the front yard to create a promenade walkway so we can create an access and public parking opportunity to access the Wildlife Sanctuary Park." So, you know, design is a process. Yes, the setbacks comply with the ordinance. Third Place East is the front yard 20 feet. East Dolphin Drive is the side yard with eight feet. And then the Elks property that we're adjacent to is the rear yard, which is 10 feet.
Thank you. Elks, I'm not a member. I've gone there a couple of times for events. No mention of dumpsters. And the only concern I have, if I have a concern, does not materially endanger the public health or safety. Dumpsters with three and four day old waste from restaurants right on the boundary of the Elks seems to be alarming, possibly a safety issue. I don't know where you're putting the dumpsters. I haven't seen that. Are they going back toward the back?
Yeah, we use the rear yard of our property, which is that 10-foot. There's actually a 12-foot service lane that parallels the Elks property, where their dumpsters are located. So those dumpster services, I'm certain, will be orchestrated and contracted with a company where that waste does not come to a point where it endangers the health, safety, and welfare of the community or our facility.
It'll also be screened. I mean, again, you don't want dumpsters just being open to anyone because you don't want public dumping. They'll be screened and fenced in. And then, for instance, at my office building, it's a general community dumpster for all the businesses and the restaurants that are there. And it's got that latch that you pull up and swing open the door, dump your trash in, and then close the door back.
Probably be compacters also.
Okay. Page 11, 58 bicycle racks for the town's use. Walk me through that, if you will, please.
Excuse me?
Walk me through what you mean by, for the town's use. I envisioned that to mean...
Yeah, it was actually for the facility's use. But there's a requirement in the ordinance that any parking lot over 20 spaces would have at least, you know, five bicycle, you know, parking spaces. So I said, "Well, let's, we want to make this a pedestrian oriented, you know, bicycle oriented, golf court oriented facility. When you come to the beach, that's what you use." So we ended up placing about 58, actually we can create about 60 places where people can park bicycles, right up in the front, along the side yard on either side of where the vertical columns are for the ingress egress, for stairways and elevators. And then there's a bank of bicycles back by the Wildlife Sanctuary Park where the ingress egress is for the ADA folks. So the concept there was to have, we may have bicycles for rent as a section, but we want to make sure that people can come to our facility and if they have bikes, there's an orderly place to park them. Because I've done a lot of multifamily projects in the past. And even though we met the ordinance, we were woefully surprised that we didn't provide enough, you know, bicycle parking because, you know, people are getting back to being mobile again.
19 parking spaces provided for the town.
Correct.
Commercial business can have a rental lot, a paid parking lot. That's not what this means.
No, Third Place East, in the conversations with Matt, that we would create those 19 spaces for paid parking and they'd be, you know, owned by the town. Third Place East we're using as our front yard. We wanted to make sure we complied with the ingress egress to the facility down Third Place, so it'd be adequate stacking. So that's why the entrance is in the back towards the Wildlife Sanctuary Park. And those 18 spaces with two handicap spaces for the town for those folks with disabilities could come to the Wildlife Sanctuary Park and park closest to the entrance.
Two more questions. And thank you. Forest Leach along the boardwalk. How will that be updated, kept up? So many times we see houses built, they put six trees in a yard, they get a certificate of occupancy, and six trees die two months later. I know you want your boardwalk to be pretty, but what assurances are there?
Well, the assurances are is that the project, I mean, the Wildlife Sanctuary Park is being built by Boardwalk Place LLC. It's going to become an asset for the folks vacationing there. So there has to be a maintenance program for that particular facility. I've built several docks in my own neighborhood. And it's weathered the storm of probably 23, 24 years of hurricanes being totally submerged, and it hasn't moved an inch. So it's going to have to be maintained by the Boardwalk Place LLC Management Company in order to, unless the town wants to participate. You know, we're creating 18 spaces that has income. Maybe there's some kind of contribution. Right now, it's the intent for us to build it and maintain it.
I didn't ask that to open the door for you. Lastly, lighting for the neighbors and the houses nearby. Walk me through your thoughts on low level lighting.
The last slide that we showed. Let's go all the way back. There we go. That's the, that's, excuse me. Yes, sir.
I just want to make, which exhibit is this?
Okay, I was just going to reference that. I'm going to exhibit 32.
Well, no, that's, it's picture 32 of exhibit... Yeah, drawing 32 of exhibit three.
Thank you.
All right, this is a day shot of Third Place East with the 19 parking spaces on the right-hand side and what I'm calling the promenade, which is about a seven-foot wide sidewalk that goes back to the Wildlife Sanctuary Park. And then we did a picture of it at night. So the LED lighting that was very successful on a project I did out as a consultant in Hyde Place out in Durham. We had 42-inch high bollards with low level lighting, which I also used at Compass Point in Leland, around a pool area, where the bollards would be just 42 inches high and have indirect lighting or uplighting on the vegetation. And that is the entire perimeter. We're not going to put in streetlights. Everything's going to be low level lighting. So you comfortably light at .33-foot candles, which is the, you know, the safety of, you know, walkability and mobility around a facility. And that's also going to be employed in the Wildlife Sanctuary Park, you know, within the, probably the railing system is LED lights. The project, if you think about it, was, there's four buildings. You know, there's two retail buildings, there's a restaurant and there's a hotel. And that creates an internal courtyard, if you recall. And lighting for that facility, again, is going to be tucked in. The benches, the lights, the soffits of the overhangs of the perimeter roof. Let's go one more. So this is picture or drawing number 21. And this shows just outside the restaurant area how the perimeter pedestrian corridor in this area where the splash pad is, is totally encapsulated and protected by, you know, a 12-foot overhang roof. So at night, and I know that Mark Loudermilk's here. I know he's going to say, because I was dying to get a nighttime shot of this. But we were, the lighting here would be underneath that bench area. It would be uplit on the rafters of the roof. So you, when I light projects, I want to make sure I do not see the source of light that creates glare, that you create an ambient glow that is safe. So that's the way we're going to light this facility. Of course, you're going to have lights from the internal rooms, but we're not going to have any perimeter spotlights or anything around a facility. We want to keep the nightscape as comfortable and seamless as possible.
And that's the same type of lighting you'll have on the boardwalk?
Correct. Yeah, the gazebo's, when we were, we had a meeting with Fire EMS Department on the 12th of December. We purposely put a series of, let's go back. So on the lower right-hand corner, this is drawing number 26.
Of exhibit three, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Exhibit three. That's the entrance in the lower right-hand corner of the Wildlife Sanctuary Park. So there are, let's see, eight gazebo's. And they're there, they follow the property line. But they're there purposely because there's a sequence of making sure that EMS or there's someone that gets in trouble out there, there's an area that to turn around in order to access someone in trouble. And plus, those are also stations for wildlife boards in order to have visitors look at what the flora and fauna and the aquatics are in the area. So we want to make it a learning environment. So those gazebo's and those roofs are going to be uplit, just like everything else, in order for those elements to glow. We can control the lighting, but I think because it's going to be a public facility, there's going to have, we have to think about the hours. And a lot of those lights could be on just photocells or they could be on timers where, you know, a certain amount's shut down so it doesn't interfere with the nightscape. That's the concept.
So can we continue in the spirit of things we agree on? So you've stipulated you're going to build the sketch, but I assume there'll be some minor changes, which I would understand. Is that correct? That's your statement, counsel?
Yeah, I had a meeting with Matt earlier, last Wednesday when we came down. And I said, "You know, we're pretty close to what we're going to build because all these folks sitting here spent a lot of time engineering, you know, the structural engineering, the architecture. So we know it works. We've tested all the soils, geology." So I think there's an ordinance, Matt, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's in Article 4.7 about revisions. So there is some elasticity as we're going through the building permit that we may be able, we're allowed to modify things within a 10% rule, I believe it is, Matt, if you want to jump in on that. In order to, in order to make sure everything fits in to, you know, the building permits. So these plans are what we're building.
Yeah, what I'm trying to get to is the guarantees that you've proffered publicly. I want them on the record. So one is you're going to build the sketch subject to minor changes. Correct, right? The other is you're going to maintain the nature walkway.
Yeah, calling the Wildlife Sanctuary Park.
Call what you will. You're going to maintain it, and are you willing to be subjected to annual inspection by the town?
Yeah, I think that would be probably protocol because the fire department, emergency services, if we're having a public easement over that, that would just be protocol. Just like when we, I build a clubhouse in a neighborhood I'm building, the fire department has to come in every year and inspect it to make sure that it complies with the safety and welfare of the public.
But again, this is about getting an understanding that's on the public record, right? You've guaranteed public access for all the amenities, right? Splash pad to restaurants, retail.
Correct.
The nature park.
Correct.
Right, you absolutely guarantee that. There're not going to be impediments, obstructions, gates, right?
100%.
100%, I like that. Let's talk about something we haven't talked about. Our sewer system is somewhat fragile. The lift pump station that you are going to install, what kind of warranty will it come with?
Well, we could probably bring up Matt Haley from Cape Fear Engineering. I've built them before in neighborhoods. The one I did down Devon Park was, you know, in Calabash. We had to go do a directional bore underneath the Calabash River. We had to upgrade the town lift station in order to serve our development. And we built a lift station in compliance with all state and regulatory agencies. And then we had to turn that over to Brunswick County. That's exactly what we're doing here, but a smaller version of it in order to service this facility. But Mr. Haley is here, you know, to answer that question probably more specifically from an engineering standpoint.
Oh, yes, Matt Haley with Cape Fear Engineering. The intention would be that the developer would design, permit, and construct the sewer lift station and associated improvements to convey all wastewater from this project into the town's system. That would be set up and designed in accordance with all of the town standards. And then, once that project was constructed and it was certified and signed off on by the town, it would be formally deeded and dedicated. And I believe that's typically a one-year warranty. It's pretty typical, but there would definitely be a warranty period consistent with all of the town standards. That's consistent with all the other development in the area. That's also how to construct lift stations and other sewer improvements.
My concern, just to state it very publicly, is the transfer of this asset causes a problem in the interface between the new asset and our existing system. Are you willing to indemnify us? You're telling me there's a one-year warranty? That sounds a bit like risk, that's all.
I'll weigh in on that. Typically, what happens is if a developer has to put in public utility infrastructure to support the development, it has to satisfy, among others, the town's expectations from its public utilities department to be built, be permitted, and then to be built according to their standards. And once they're satisfied that that's been done, then the town would accept that asset. There's still the warranty period. I'm under, I don't know, I mean, if there's, if there's a standard protocol for the town's public utility... for the town's public utilities department to require developers to not only give a warranty on an asset that's been approved by all the state agencies and the town to also give an indemnification agreement, I'd have to see it. If it's standard, then our client should be held to that standard. If it's something that's going to be unique to my client, that's not the standard, then I would submit we should be treated like every other developer in this town that has submitted for offer and accept a dedication to the town for the town to accept, that should be the standard. And if that's the standard of indemnification, fine. If it's not, then it should be whatever the standard is that you all hold developers to for, for purposes of accepting an offer of a dedicated asset.
Well...
How long would the indemnification be, for instance?
Well, hang on, counsel. Fair enough, and we'd have to do some research on the exact standards and past practice with respect to it. But this is a lot of, well, thirty-two gallons is a lot. And it could impact the system, which has historically some problems. So, yeah, I'm concerned about indemnification, because you're going to walk away, not you personally, of course, and suddenly we're stuck with this lift station that is impeding the overall efficacy of the system-wide island sewage system. That's a major problem. So, yeah, I, I would like some reassurance in writing, if we can get it, if that's our practice.
If I may interject.
Sure.
That was my same question to Mr. Haley.
Okay.
So I want to clarify...
I instructed him to make sure he met with WK Dixon, which is your consultant. And they had met, and we worked all that out to find out how much capacity is in the system, what is downstream, what is the impact our facility has on the existing system. Now, I have a letter that I think I could probably distribute as part of the record.
This is all about putting the development, the developers, all of your experts and council, frankly, you too as well, on the record. So you're saying you've worked this out, you've got an agreement with our engineer? I just want it on the record.
If you, if you feel...
It's a letter from...
I defer to your counsel first.
I'm fine with it being offered. It just supports, it supports what Mr. Haley and Mr. Stewart have already said.
Okay.
I understand. I'm all about transparency.
So we'll, we'll mark this as exhibit, uh...
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve. And while Mr. Stewart's passing that out, just want to go make sure... My understanding of the town with public parks that it has around here, you have hours of operation. So for the, the water sanctuary, the piers you see here on slide twenty-six of exhibit three, we would want access to that structure for the public, limited to the same hours for other public parks and recreation. And they're going to be limited for hotel guests, too, because it's a safety issue. You don't want people out there at all hours of the night doing whatever they want to do. There needs to be a mechanism to make sure that those hours are, are limited. It's not a free-for-all. The hotel pool is not open to the public. That's for the hotel guests. But the splash pad would be open to the public, along with all the retail services and the restaurant on the property. I just wanted to clarify that.
That seems reasonable. Before I yield my time back, there hasn't been any discussion about signage. What is the signage plan? And how intrusive, in quotes, might that be? Bear in mind that you abut residential neighborhoods here.
Uh, Mark Loudermilk was here tonight. And I had those discussions. And the example I provided him was the example that was the pictorial preferences in your comprehensive plan. So we're not looking at any big illuminated signs. We want to respect the streetscape and the human scale of things on the sidewalk. So the signage would probably be up on the probably thirteen-foot-high realm of where the podium or the promenade level is in order to promote, you know, the stores that are in there, or perhaps a kiosk. We want to make it simple, unobtrusive. If you remember what I had mentioned, I'd much rather respect the view, don't become the view.
And it would be compliant with your signage...
Correct.
...provisions in your ordinance. It wouldn't be bigger. It wouldn't be brighter. It would be built and permitted and approved by your staff based on your ordinance.
And...
With all the technology available today, everyone, everyone, we don't even use doorbells anymore. You know, when people come visit us, they text us. So I think the phone is going to be a huge asset for mobility, for location, advertising that is here.
As counsel said, there's, there's much to be desired in the attention that your experts and that you, sir, gave to the development. So we don't want a glaring, obnoxious sign, which visually intrudes on the residents who are neighbors of it. So that's comforting.
As Mr. Kirkland and I initially met in late September and October, if we're going to do this, I would like to craft it with, you know, the services department to make sure that this becomes an example for the town, especially through the special use process. So like Mr. Richardson said earlier, we can hopefully look at this as when someone else comes in and applications similar to this, you can show them that this is what we expect.
Okay. And I have one last question for counsel. This is being presented as, I'll call it a boutique hotel with unique designs, pedestrian-friendly, with lots of public access and amenities. But I'd like, since you brought it up, counsel, about dispelling rumors and things that are flying around as, you know, unreliable information. Is this project connected to a corporate entity? Is it part of a chain?
I, I'm unaware of it being connected to a chain. I don't know if... This is John Stewart, who's the principal in Boardwalk Place LLC.
Sure. So, John Stewart, I'm the, the principal of Boardwalk LLC. As it currently stands, we are not associated with any chain. The hotel was designed to conform with the standards of Hilton Garden Inn. That is a potential for it. But it would not change the look of the building, the layout of the rooms, the design, or any type of obnoxious signage. That is a premium brand hotel. That is generally, would be considered a plus on a development like this, as well as for the value of the revenue that it would bring in.
I, I'm trying to correct misinformation that's out there. So it is a boutique hotel, as it's currently being designed. May have been modeled on something corporate, but it's not part of a chain, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Currently not part of the chain.
Currently not. I hear that.
Well, I mean, look, listen, I mean, there's...
No decision has been made on whether it would be boutique or whether it be part of the chain.
What I know is this.
It's your property. I understand. I'm just trying to clarify.
He's already stipulated that it's going to have that appearance. Whether or not it stays under Boardwalk Place LLC Hotel or becomes a Holiday Inn or becomes a Marriott or Hilton is immaterial so long as it looks and is built the exact way that we're telling you it's going to be built. I mean, I'm unaware of anything under your special use permit ordinance that says that we have to commit to always being a boutique and not being a free market to be able to take that asset and transfer it to Holiday Inn. Perfect example is up at Town and Rysel Beach. The Holiday Inn Sunsprey Resort was built on the beach. It is no longer owned by Holiday Inn Sunsprey. It's owned by a private business that's upgraded it and taken it even to a nicer level. So I, I don't know what the purpose is of... I, I don't know how to address whatever the concern is about whether it's a chain or not when the appearance and the aesthetics are being represented to be built the way you've seen it and the way we've represented it in this application.
I would submit you, you have addressed it. So it's, it's being built and designed as a boutique, but the ownership obviously reserves the right to sell it. They could sell it the day after it's built, correct? I mean, that's, well, probably not, but okay, that's hyperbole, but...
Once the, if tonight moves forward and we get an endorsement, then the first step is finding a service provider. And to shop around for the, for the right service provider that's going to fit into the program and the vision of the way, was what we're getting approved tonight.
I'll yield.
My only question is, your intent is to build all of this at once. I mean, you're not going to just do piecemeal, like put the retail in and wait for the motel or put the motel in, wait for the retail. I guess I'm more, more concerned with the amenities such as the additional sidewalks, the third-place parking, the crosswalks.
In order to construct the facility, it has to be done in phases. Of course, we'd have to do the Third Place East improvements, which we have to get some permission tonight that Boardwalk Place LLC will become the authority appointment agent for the town in order for us to pursue building Third Place East for the town. We have to first do all the geotechnical aspects and build the columns that are going to support the promenade deck. That promenade deck is split in two, because there's that big, open corridor to visually and physically separate the public realm, which is the restaurant and the retail, from what we're saying is the private realm, which is the hotel, you know, boutique area. So once those columns are in, then we have to put our stormwater in. And a stormwater is put in once we circumvent all those columns. And then we put a layer, not, you know, parking or pavers, but we have to stabilize that. So then we have the stormwater. Then we build the podium deck. We have to build a hotel first, and then we build a restaurant, and then we build a retail. We're going to be using the podium deck as a staging area to put all our materials in order to build the hotel. So, yes, we have to build the whole thing all.
I understand, I understand how the construction will work. I guess my question is, before you start using the hotel or the motel or you get COs, will the sidewalks be finished? Will the walkways be finished? Will the third street, you said third street would be the first thing you do?
Third street will have to be built. The sidewalks have to be built. The hotel could be up and running while we're still building the restaurant and the, and the retail.
Correct.
The Wildlife Sanctuary Park is because we are outside the AEC limit for this. The, the building structure itself of the hotel, retail, and restaurant can be, we can move aggressively forward to get all the building permits, hopefully by the fall. And then we would submit a general permit through KAMA to build the Wildlife Sanctuary Park.
I'm not so much concerned about the things on the property. I'm more concerned about the things that, that you're showing as extras for the town. I guess my concern would be that you would build the motel, start using, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't get the sidewalks and, and the third place. But you've already told me that the third place would be first.
Right. As, as soon as it's being occupied and used, we'd have to have, we're promoting connectivity and safety. So we have to have the sidewalks.
Correct.
We have to have Third Place East. Then there has to be a staging area. We have to make sure that the Boardwalk Sanctuary Park is built sometime after the hotel is built. You know, just, there's only a certain amount of room there that we have to play checkers with, so to speak.
Right. And I understand you have permitting processes to go through with each step of that.
Exactly. So I answered your question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Blaylock, do you have questions?
I just want to make a statement. I want to be comfortable with the fact that what we see is what we get. And I think you've addressed most of those. And I don't really have any other significant questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. I have two comments that I'd like for you just to hear. And if you want to nod your head, that'll reassure me that you, you've heard these and that you'll incorporate them into your operations. So last month, there was a public comment from a gentleman who lives across from the Elks Lodge, I believe, is he stated his address, and he had a concern about noise. So earlier today, we had the noise conversation with another project. So just as a reminder, we do have a noise ordinance. And I'm not going to dictate to you the hours of your pool deck operation, but just keep in mind that you might want to research our noise ordinance and be in compliance with that so you don't get any phone calls from people complaining about noise at your pool deck late at night.
Understood.
The second comment is, I greatly appreciate the, the design with the parking under the, the structure under the facility. I think that's a wonderful design concept. I do have concerns about your intentions on managing and enforcing access to that parking. We just implemented paid parking. And we would love to be able to assure that people parking in your structure are hotel guests or retail participants and not parking there and dragging their, their beach chairs to the beach for the day for free parking. So I'm, I'm assuming you're going to have a plan for, for the hotel guests. I can see a registration process, and here's your pass for your vehicle to park for the hotel. But the retail side of that is kind of open. So hopefully, there's a plan to enforce and, and monitor and manage the parking for the retail?
Correct.
Do you want to make another comment, or?
I was just going to say that it would be a technology-enforced parking situation.
Okay.
It would be a technology-enforced methodology, but, yeah, there's lots of ways to do that now.
Okay, great.
I can give you a firsthand example. Downtown Wilmington has a Embassy Suites, and it has a parking deck that's connected to that hotel, but it also has, allows for public parking. If you're staying at the hotel, you have to get your parking pass validated, and it doesn't charge you. They give you a slip. If you want to eat at a restaurant in the hotel, you have to get, you have to take your parking sticker in with you, have the waiter validate it with a barcode that they affix to it, that you then submit through the reader. Everybody else would have to pay for parking. Now, we're not going to allow for retail parking for members of the public that aren't eating at the restaurant or staying at the hotel. So that last aspect is gone. If they want to use a restaurant, they get their parking ticket, they get it validated at the, at the restaurant, and they get out by way of the mechanized gate, would be what I'm imagining happening.
Excellent. Thank you for that response. Architectural design, we've already covered that. I would like to go to exhibit three, drawing two. Yes, the image on the far right. It's clear to me that your intent for sidewalk improvements does include the pedestrian crossover at Third Place East and Dolphin, as well as what appears to be pedestrian crosswalks, maybe down at Beach Drive. However, I do not see, coming off of your sidewalk improvements along Middleton Avenue, that there is a pedestrian cross, crosswalk at that intersection with Dolphin. Can you clarify the, can we put a pedestrian crosswalk at that intersection as well?
Yeah, Mr. Richardson referenced in the conference of plan those thermoplastic crosswalks.
That's correct.
That, that was the intent at those intersections in order to identify that. Because right now, it's kind of sketchy out there. There's a sidewalk in one place and sidewalk in the other. I'm a big pedestrian circulation fan. I was the first one in Wilmington to build Demrest Landing with sidewalks in like, ever since the historic district. So the idea is to create connectivity. So if you're staying at Boardwalk Place, you have mar, clearly marked identifiable pedestrian crosswalks and a, and a corridor, so you can walk out to the beach in a safe manner. But there, there are, as you come out to the end of Middleton and Third Place East, you know, the parking area is there. I'm uncertain of the use. One is used for golf carts. You know, I have to work with the town, you know, to do that in order to make those pedestrian corridors more identifiable.
Okay. But, but you're, it sounds like your intent is wherever there's a sidewalk improvement, you're willing to do a pedestrian crosswalk?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'd like to move to what was recently submitted as exhibit twelve, that you handed out. It indicates in this letter or this study that has the seal on it, which I appreciate that, that, that you would need to bypass an existing vacuum station and go directly to pump station number one.
Yes, that is correct. We have had, you know, meetings with Mr. Kelly, as well as WK Dixon, the town's engineer. And it's been brought to our attention. This is Matt Haley again with Cape Fear Engineering. I, I am the author of the exhibit number twelve. So through those conversations with Mr. Kelly and WK Dixon, it was identified that there are some capacity concerns with the existing vacuum system, specifically the vacuum station that this project would direct... system, specifically the vacuum station that this project would direct wastewater to. So, as a result, we would bypass that station, and we would pump directly to the main lift station that's collecting all of the sewer for the island and then discharging it back into the Brunswick County system. It's our understanding that that lift station has a capacity of approximately 3 million gallons a day and that there's sufficient capacity for our project. So, I know there's a lot of discussion about 30, 32,000 gallons a day, which is what we would anticipate this project generating based on the North Carolina two-T rules. But that's approximately 1% of the capacity of that lift station, so there's no capacity concerns in that lift station or in the downstream Brunswick County collection system.
Okay. My main interest was just to make sure that you understood your level of commitment for providing the infrastructure at your cost that you'll then convey to the town once it's completed.
That was the whole purpose of Mr. Haley generating that. I want that on record.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anyone else?
My few questions have to do with the sanctuary. I love the idea of a wildlife sanctuary and giving people access to our wildlife, as well as our flora and our fauna. My concern is for supervision. So, this looks to be a fairly large incursion into the wetland area where we certainly have gators. So, there was a gator last summer who found its way, as has happened previously, to behind Publix. And once discovered, it became a very sad state of affairs where people were chucking food over the fence into that area, were throwing pizza boxes, were throwing, you know, any number of food items to try to feed the gator, and then were throwing rocks to get what is normally a fairly docile and sedentary gator to move for their pleasure. So, I have some concerns about supervision, especially for something that goes so far into the wetlands and what your plans might be for not only, I mean, a sanctuary implies a safe area for our wildlife. And so, my concerns would be around how you would intend to supervise that area, particularly at night, and whether there were plans for cameras or whatever the case may be. So, and then my second would be for litter. So, we know that people are fairly in the moment, and when they're done with whatever it is they're eating or whatever, that, you know, they would then dispose of their trash in the area that your intent is to protect. So, my question was around to just explore what your thoughts are there.
Can I take a stab at this?
No.
Okay.
This is my baby. Well, we can create, you know, this is part, here's the process. I'm thinking, okay, we can have the WSP guides, you know, the Wildlife Sanctuary Park Guides, employment opportunity for college kids. We educate them, and they, you know, it's a job generator. Perhaps it does have hours, and we have to police it, we have to control it. There's no one better to address that is John Stewart with his technological background. So, I think that creates an interesting challenge, and I accept the challenge. You know, we'll figure it out.
We have to create a safe environment for the hotel guests and for people that are coming out there. Now, with all of your town parks, I'm sure you have littering issues, and you have folks that are doing, it's our job to monitor it, and if there's someone out there that's vandalizing or littering or terrorizing an alligator, our job is to have staff on site to call the police, to have the offenders sighted if necessary if they're unruly, would be if I'm running that hotel.
So, here's what I would say is, it's not a problem to make sure there's security cameras that cover basically all parts of it. At that point, it becomes just as anybody else who is littering or harassing something in a public park for the town, it becomes a police issue. There'll be cameras, and that can be addressed that way. As far as litter goes, we have four covered areas. We'll likely have trash receptacles in each one of them. It does lead to, well, then, how do we get cleaned up? I don't think that's something we have to figure out now, but we're going to work with the town to figure out how that gets handled. So, that should give plenty of coverage for that. So, obviously, we can't control the behavior of people, but we can do our best to make sure that we give them the opportunity to do the right thing, so.
And I appreciate that. There are also deer, you know, that's one of their last bastions in terms of on the island, and I'm just trying to create an awareness in your thinking for what might be needed to protect, for it to be truly a sanctuary for our wildlife, which requires supervision, because if you don't see it, it won't happen.
Well, we can talk to the wildlife in game and figure out what signage is necessary. People have this desire to feed the cute animals without realizing they're actually harming the animals by feeding them, but we could certainly have those conversations to see what they would recommend in terms of signage as well, in terms of educational placards to try to avoid that.
This would be a gazebo that generate for, so we can have a wild one. It's on the first sheet.
Right.
On the boardwalk, there's an education that you don't fear, this is what the flora and fauna and aquatics are. When I had the boardwalk all surveyed at all locations, and I was walking out there prior to last hearing, so I wanted to make sure that I could, under testimony, say, yes, this is formidable and available. And there were, on the previous day, the surveyors came upon at the same station that took that one picture, right, next one. There were three fairly sizable moccasins reading together. Right. So, we'll make sure that, well, the boardwalk's going to be about six and a half to seven feet over substrate. So, it's going to be a respectable height in order to, you know, weather all the tidal issues.
Yeah.
No regressing. We did think about it, but not to the level of detail.
Right.
Unless we get permission, there's a longer list of things we have to do. It's going to take some time.
Right. And I understand that. It is more looking for the commitment. If you're calling it a sanctuary, to truly make it a sanctuary and, of course, wildlife's...
We will do our part. I can't speak to the people that use it, of course.
I always have to put a name to something, even like Boardwalk Place. It mustn't have a name that has life.
I like.
Don't blame anybody. You blame me.
No, no, no. I'm just looking for the commitment, that's all, for supervision.
I'm pretty committed to this project.
I understand that.
Should be committed.
Anything else, counsel? I turn it back to you, Mr. Eads.
I have a few questions for the applicant or Mr. Richardson. I just want to make sure, excuse me, when we go into deliberations, I understand what's been represented. Number one, the applicant agrees to a condition that the project, if the special use permit is issued, will be built to the specs reflected in the drawings contained in Exhibit Three.
Correct.
Number two, in the application itself, there's several representations about what the applicant will do. For example, and I'm on page, it's in your narrative. It's page 10 of the agenda packet. For instance, and I'll go through these if needed, but for instance, in the second response, the response to the second criteria, special use will be in harmony. The land plan program secures screened parking underneath. So, I'm assuming the applicant would agree that all parking would be screened?
Correct.
Yes.
Same thing for all the other affirmative representations in here. If you'll get to the next paragraph, enhancements of the sidewalks.
Everything in our narrative and our application, we stand by.
Okay. There were some discussions in response to questions from the council regarding the lighting, and I'm woefully incompetent to know anything about this, but I've got .33 foot candles, low-level lighting.
Correct.
Is there, is that a tier of type lighting, or is there a lighting plan? I didn't see one in here.
There is not. There is on...
Use of LED lights and no spotlights. I understand the gazebo lights will be going north, but that's the kind of thing I'm, to see if the applicant's agreeable to a condition to a plan within those parameters.
Yes. I mean, I can tell you firsthand, I've been involved with Mr. Stewart's projects. He has a heavy emphasis on lighting downward and non-intrusively to his neighbors. The services will all be encapsulated on the interior of this building structure. He's not going to have elevated spotlights. It's going to be attractive uplighting for trees and vegetation.
It's already on drawing number four and Exhibit Three, but thank you.
Four on the design criteria chart specifies all the details that everyone's looking at, right.
Okay. And so, Grady, I think this also, or Mr. Richardson, this is also in your narrative, public access to all public amenities with the understanding the pool's for hotel guests only.
What's that? The pool is for the hotel guests.
Right.
The splash pad and the retail services are all open to the public.
That whole interior, again, the design is to create an encapsulation on a perimeter. So, the hotel's a big U shape, so that internal courtyard will be used for hotel guests. And then the three buildings on the left-hand side of Exhibit Three, number nine, with the restaurant to the top left and the two retail spaces create another courtyard, and that's all public realm.
Right. And you can see how we've segregated the hotel pool away from the splash pad and the retail that's open to the public.
And I tell you, what I'm trying to just clarify, I know that you've got some affirmative representations in your project narrative. You've made some affirmative representations during the hearing. I just want to make sure, as you know, under 160D, with SUP conditions, it's treated a little bit differently than it was under 160A. So, I just want to go through that list. So, there will be public access to all public amenities with the understanding that the pool is a hotel amenity, not a public amenity.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Pool and...
Okay. The applicant acknowledges or would agree to the condition that the infrastructure referenced in what's been marked as Exhibit Twelve, to Mr. Martin's point, would be a condition of the issuance of the SUP.
Yes.
Correct. Responsibility, Boardwalk Place LLC.
Okay.
Put a call on the projects side, too.
Right. And then some of these things are kind of duplicative because they're in the narrative, the 19 spaces, paid parking spaces we talked about, splash pad being constructed, things of that nature. Okay. So, you're amenable and consent if the board's inclined to approve it with conditions. Your consent to those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Eads, if you're documenting conditions, I'd like to expand upon some you've noted. You referenced the commitment to the architectural design for the building. I'd like to include the wildlife sanctuary park design in that as well.
Sure. Well, my represent, what I, the condition I was proposing was all of the drawings in Exhibit Three, which I think include that wildlife preserve.
Yeah.
That's the way it will be written.
Okay. Good. Yep.
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to go back to Drawing Two in that same Exhibit Three to make sure that there's a commitment on the sidewalk improvements and the pedestrian crosswalks as it was discussed.
You have that commitment. We've got, we're representing to you, we are intending to build what you've seen in Exhibit Three and as supplemented tonight. We have to get permits from other people to build things, for instance, KAMA. Got to get a KAMA permit perhaps for some or all of that water sanctuary. We believe, based on our consultants, that that permit will be obtained, but for some reason, they may not approve it. I mean, we...
Or they might cut down the size.
We can't...
Submit this...
Understand.
But we can't apply for a KAMA permit until we have a special use permit to be able to go get those permits for building.
My concern specifically on Drawing Two, there are no red lines illustrating a pedestrian crosswalk at Middleton and East Dolphin Drive. You show a sidewalk improvement...
I believe there's a sidewalk there already.
But there's no pedestrian crosswalk.
Okay. So, we'll commit to...
I wasn't, I didn't know at the time, because the town street and Middleton Road is also DOT, we have to get permission from them.
Correct.
DOT to build a crosswalk, so.
I see what you're talking about, Mr. Martin, on Slide Two. I see a dotted red line over East Beach from Middleton, but not Dolphin in Middleton.
That is correct.
We, that should show a crosswalk.
That's what he's asking for.
That's what I'm asking for.
Correct.
So, you would agree to that as a condition? Well, the crosswalk as depicted on Drawing Two with the addition of a crosswalk transversing East Dolphin from Middleton.
As long as we get permission from NC DOT, which is going to have to be part of the process. I know Division Three, I'm sure they'll grant it, but you know, it's always, you always have to ask permission somewhere.
I'm confident you'll make it work. And last but not least, Mr. Eads, I would like to also add the, where the applicant agreed to an annual inspection of the Wildlife Sanctuary Park.
Yes.
Okay. And just so, because the details here are going to matter, inspection as to maintenance, both of the structures that are erected and any vegetative plan leading to it?
Yeah, all the upkeep and maintenance to ensure that it remains safe, protected. It's a sanctuary. We want to make sure it remains a sanctuary.
Is Lee still here?
I'd like to bring up the detail.
Is the fire chief still here?
Excuse me?
No.
I don't believe so.
Nope. Yeah, there he is.
He's in the back.
Oh, he's...
Doesn't a fire inspection have to be performed once a year on a commercial building?
Mm-hmm.
Well, wouldn't that include the sanctuary?
The structure probably, but not landscaping and whatnot. But, Mr. Richardson, would you consent to our fire chief answering that question?
Sure.
Mr. Eads, he's not been sworn in, do I need to swear him?
Chief.
Fire chief is the reason that there's eight gazebo's out there. Thank you. Yes, every year...
Sworn in.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cause a big...
I tell truth, chief.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that that shows that it's going to be inspected whether we require it or not. Don't laugh, chief. I'm getting you up here in a minute for the alligator.
Chief, if you would, please state your full name, position with the town, and then go ahead and answer the question.
Kenan Lee Price, the fire chief, County of Oak Island. Okay, so, counsel, what was your question?
My question is, is a motel required to have a fire inspection once a year?
Yes. So, there is fire inspections that are be, that our inspector will do once a year along with, we go in each year and do pre-planning inspections, go in and make safety recommendations, look at, through the building and talk to them. While the inspections part, they can have fines along with it. If they're not meeting the right criteria, we go along and make suggestions just to make it a safer place, so.
If they have a sanctuary boardwalk that goes out the back, that is included in their property, would you inspect that as well?
We can. If the council and the manager would like for us to inspect further than what we generally do, then we can, we can make that part of a comprehensive inspection along with our annual pre-plans.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, counsel, what I heard the petitioner commit to was maintenance. There is a maintenance program, apparently. Obviously, it's your ass that you want to maintain it, and it sounds like as if our fire marshal can do the inspection for the integrity of the structure. So, we need both of those things. And you do have a maintenance...
My preference, Mr. Bach, and I don't know if you were directing that to me or not, but would be that to get the applicant's position on a condition that would require yearly inspection and maintenance.
You'll get our stipulation to be treated just like every other commercial business and hotels on Oak Island for these annual inspections, if that's what they do. If it's biannual, that's what we'll agree to. If it's every two years, we'll agree to that. We just want to be treated the same way as all other commercial businesses, there are hotels with retail shops, restaurants, et cetera. So, if that's annually, six times a year, whatever the requirement is.
We understand that, but we don't have another business on Oak Island that has a sanctuary like this. So, I'm, we're just trying to determine if that will be inspected for safety every year.
Annual inspections for safety are fine. That's fine.
Mr. Richardson, do you...
Yes.
Okay. So, the answer is yes and yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I have something else to add. Let's see, on Exhibit Three, number 27, it's an exhibit of the Wildlife Sanctuary Park Boardwalk. And of course, Mark Loudermilk and I, as the architect, I had a lot of discussions about this, thinking about the long-term maintenance. There was a detail that Mark provided... There was a detail that Mark provided for, on the second floor overlook of the restaurant, you see that, that pulled wire, the stainless steel wire that's pulled on that railing? Well, my thought was that the horizontal, you know, wood posts, the six-by-six posts and the top rail, but I think, you know, to have this 100% accurate, we like to have the option to pull, you know, the stainless steel wire there. I think it's going to be a longer-term maintenance and safety than having wood timbers there. Plus, you know, on the docks that I've built in a waterfront where I've used either pulled wire or some kind of rope, so it's more nautical theme, when you have a hurricane coming, you know you're going to have a storm surge, you pull that out so it doesn't catch debris, and you make sure that that, you know, horizontal timber doesn't catch debris that starts, it compromises structural integrity of the structure. So, you know, the gazebos will be built identical to that, but I think the, the boardwalk encapsulation of the rails will probably change to a wire system. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. We have some, those kind of flexibilities or details for long-term maintenance and safety.
I just, that bears on the proposed, and these are hypothetical conditions now, one, because that is part of exhibit three, so if we're going to make an exception for that-
I think what he's asking for is to have the option to go from wood slats to the steel wire.
Right.
Kelly, this upfront.
So if the board's inclined to grant this with these conditions, we would address the option for wire instead of wood slats in condition one. Anything further, Mr. Martin? Madam Mayor?
Um, no, it's just, I appreciate your commitment to monitor and pull trash from the park area that lands, you know, I mean, truly to just take care of the park and make sure that you've got an active surveillance system to actually protect the wildlife that exists in that space as the name sanctuary would imply.
So on that, active surveillance system?
Mr. Stewart, you need to come to the microphone, I'm sorry. Thank you.
More than happy to bear the cost of putting that in, but in terms of monitoring it, my preference would be to turn that over to the Town of Oak Island Police as something that they should monitor or can monitor, being a public access area. There would be no, I don't see how there would be any incurred costs with that, but, I mean, we'll be responsible for the maintenance of it, but the monitoring is, I think it's probably more of a police function, if you would agree.
Mr. Kelly? The legality of that?
If it is, do I need to be sworn in?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Entertaining night.
Close to a vote. Or do you need it before? Okay.
The evidence of your counsel during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing else will choose to help you out.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So if the question is for the whole area to be maintained by the-
Yes, sir.
-client here, the town, if we're going to look at putting in some amenities ourselves, kayak launch and those things of this access, I think those will be things that we work out with them at a later date. But for monitoring of that, we're looking at Ninth Street and Twentieth Street currently to put in some monitoring there to monitor the boardwalks. So I, if that became a policing issue, or if there was an issue that came up, I think at that time, we would talk with them to see if it would be ours or theirs, but it all depends on what the issue that we're seeing was happening. If it was from guests or customers of their facility, it'll sort of be their part. If it's from everybody visiting on our side, then I'd say it would be our part.
I'm not sure how that delineation would easily be made, but-
That's my point on that, I'm not sure it would, but you allow-
Well, if they're going to have a gate or no gate, if anybody can walk up this boardwalk-
We're not going to restrict access to-
So you're not restricting any access? They can walk right into the motel from this boardwalk.
No.
There will be a gate.
The access to the park I thought we're referring to, like, so we'll monitor our own internal property, but what I thought we're referring, talking about is the sanctuary wildlife park and access to the wildlife park. Access to the wildlife park is not through the hotel, that is actually off Third Street, and that's pub, access is available at all times.
No, no.
Anywhere where they have restricted access would be theirs.
Right.
If the rest of the park or west of the walkway is ours, then if they have no access, if they're granting us an easement or a condition to allow us to have free use of this property, then I would say it's ours. If it is for their customers or their people for certain areas, then it would be theirs. But if anything that would be public, then I would say it would be ours, but I didn't know how we were defining whose was whose at this moment.
May I weigh in from, from the standpoint of what I do for clients and risk mitigation and liability issues? The, the park is going to have restricted hours consistent with the town's other park facilities for the public. You can't have restricted hours if you don't have a means by which to lock it and unlock it. There's going to have to be a gate that's going to have to be locked to prevent the public or anyone else from using that park after hours-
Right.
-and before hours. So that's going to be in place. Then, I would imagine, the insurance policy for this structure and for these operations is going to require certain security levels of security cameras, private security and employee management, employee supervision of those areas, and so, you can't possibly factor every possible scenario of what could go wrong out there, no, no more than someone could jump off the Barbie Bridge to, to night on the way home. I mean, there's nothing that prevents that from happening. There's no way to, to cover every possible scenario. What I would say is this, if, forget it for a sec, if there's an issue out there, there's an incident, 911's going to be called, I, I am fairly certain that your police are going to respond to that scene, right? And so whether it's an unruly hotel guest who's had too much to drink and is inebriated, or it's a member of the public under the same way, the police are going to be called under both scenarios. Now, I think it's a different scenario where you're asking the police to routinely add that to their monitoring and their rounds. You know, I don't know what your capacity is, but it seems to me that that's a public access, a public asset that may warrant occasionally monitoring a foot, a foot police officer just walking around and, and just taking a check, just to have that presence, no different than at a basketball game, having a presence of a, of a deputy out, out front.
So, so here's the thing, in Oak Island currently, your other parks aren't locked up and they're just posted.
So, you know-
We do have one that gets locked up every night at-
There is-
One St. Island Drive.
Okay, well, whatever makes the most sense, we, obviously, since there's basically one public access in and off, on and off this thing, we can certainly put a gate and lock it. Again, I have no problem with putting in the security monitoring syst, the security system. It comes down to a question of, okay, if you're going to have a security camera system, who's going to be monitoring the footage or going through things like that?
I'm more concerned that in the moment, right? I mean, I don't want us to have to start pulling alligators out of the canal because people can't self-regulate. So I'm only, I'm only asking that there is an awareness, a mindfulness, that when there are people out there, that someone is keeping an eye on them, that they're not being stupid because the word sanctuary doesn't, doesn't imply that, and I think you would agree.
I would agree. I, I think if we, again, we, we have cameras out there, we post that there are cameras, people tend to behave a little better when there are cameras, right? Then it's, at that point, it's, you know, we've done what we can in terms of monitoring what, what is done out there, I guess.
So what I'm hearing, you say that you're okay with it being a shared responsibility, that if, if there are-
I think it should be, yes.
More, more eyes on that asset, I think it would be a, I would feel a lot better.
You can have signs posted about security cameras, do not feed, you can put the Oak Island citation, which I'm sure is in your code of ordinances for feeding alligators, and you can get cited for it. The signage can serve as a deterrent along with the threat of you're being watched, you're on, you're on camera, so, you know, all of those sorts of things.
I, I understand you're trying to protect your client, I'm just asking for a commitment, Mr. Richardson.
A commitment to-
For what, for what we just discussed. I don't want to belabor the point.
We, we have incentive to protect the environment and our hotel guests and the employees out there and the general public, and for that matter, the wildlife. So if we, I mean, obviously, if there's a problem that arises, because people are properly feeding animals, that's a problem, and we'll have to address it with them.
I mean, the entire intent to design a facility like this is that we don't want to rely on 120 days a year of typical, you know, vacation. We've designed this so this has become more of a destination facility, it could be active year-round, and having an asset like that has to be well-maintained, it's got to be beautiful seamlessly, and it does have to be monitored, because that's going to be a draw that is unique to this type of facility. I don't know, there's only a few other places I know on the coast that have amenity like this, that, I think it's, it's to our benefit to make sure that it's well-maintained and controlled.
My concern is eased. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Out there, you know, so if you stay at the hotel and your wife and kids want to go out with your four and seven-year-old who are walking out there, they have to know that they're safe, that-
I'm confident, I'm confident we'll work this out. Let's move on.
Sir.
Madam Mayor, point of view?
Mr. Eads-
Go ahead, sir.
On the 13th February meeting, I was duly sworn as a witness, and withstanding. Tonight's proceedings have all been one-sided. You haven't heard anything in terms of a summary from an opposing point of view, and there is one at least.
We had four and a half hours of me, of, of February the 13th, of opposing views, four and a half hours, and we listened intently. So now I think we at least deserve to let, let them have their side.
Mr. Eads, what is the protocol?
If, if he was a party, which, and I don't recall saying that he had standing or didn't have standing, I do recall saying that we generally allow people, if they allege some sort of injury, to, to, we err on the side of the overinclusion. The only person we excluded was a gentleman who said he was not even claiming damages. He's not a party to the action, and the witnesses that were heard tonight spoke in opposition. Mr. Richardson's summation is not evident, it's just, it's argument. The rest of the testimony that you heard from the applicant was directly in response to questions from the board, not them getting a second bite at the apple.
So with those circumstances, I'm sorry, I'll have to deny that request, but appreciate where your heart comes from. Mr. Eads?
Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Okay, at this point, in case there are additional questions, instead of closing the hearing, recommend we suspend it. Start your deliberations. If there's any questions, you can ask the applicant or Mr. Kirkland. Once a vote is made, whichever way it goes, then we will close the evidentiary portion of the hearing as well. The criteria that must be met can be found on pages four and five of your agenda packet. The applicant has indicated a list of at least five conditions that they will consent to. It's the applicant's burden to come forth with substantial incompetent relevant evidence that tends to show they have met the criteria, that doesn't, Mr. Richardson quoted the case law correctly, tends to show is different than proving. And if the applicant is successful in coming forward and meeting that burden, if that evidence is not controverted pursuant to North Carolina law and our ordinance, the applicant shall receive the permit. This board can append reasonable conditions to any approval. Again, we just went through at least five conditions that the applicant is amenable to, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you or the council may have.
Counsel, any additional questions for Mr. Eads?
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we approve the special use permit for the hotel project, also known as the boardwalk place, with the conditions that were documented by our town attorney, Mr. Brian Eads, and if he would like to read those for clarification.
I would. Condition one is that if approved, the project will be built in accordance with the renditions and drawings contained in exhibit three, with the exception that the wildlife reserve planking, not planking, what's it, fencing can be replaced with wire instead of wood, and that the applicant will put the thermoplastic or some sort of crosswalk, crosswalk demarcation across Dolphin at Middleton. Second condition is that all assertions in the project narrative will be a condition of an approval, and by way of example, but not exhaustive lists, 19 parking spaces, splash pad built, public has access to all amenities with the exception of the pool and the courtyard by the pool, which is not a public amenity, it's a hotel amenity. Next condition is applicant shall construct the infrastructure described in exhibit 12 as a condition, and the applicant shall submit to a yearly inspection and maintain the wildlife preserve in a safe and structurally integral manner. Any questions about those conditions?
No, but there's a, an additional condition that we discussed, counsel, that we, we have exhibit 12 for, but subject to our past practice and subject to the recommendation of our engineer, the petitioner will provide a warranty that meets our needs.
Sure. And I would just say in the law of dedication, and Mr. Richardson, feel free to chime in if you disagree in any way, just because infrastructure's dedicated does not mean we have to accept it. It's my understanding that historically, we accept it only if it is one built to standard and two, we receive a one-year warranty from the date of acceptance.
That is 100%-
That's our past practice, the gentleman's already agreed to it.
Yep, that's 100% correct, because the most common example is subdivision developer offering streets that aren't built to the town's specifications or DOT specs, town does not have to accept those streets. Same thing goes with any other sort of infrastructure like sewer. So we've got to build it to what you're expecting and, and be signed off by your public utilities department.
And I would just say, Mr. Bach, from a practical standpoint, that's a self-regulating concept to a certain degree. They will have to get a NCD-EQ permit and a NCDOT permit. If they are in violation of that permit or that station malfunctions, they're going to be shut down, so they're going to have the most incentive of anyone to make sure it's built properly and working properly. But I will add the condition that upon acceptance, the developer will give a one-year warranty to the town. Mr. Richardson, do you consent to that?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second to Mr.?
I'll second Mr. Martin's motion.
Counsel, let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Bach?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Blaylock?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Mr. Richardson, I would ask you to take the first strike at a proposed order, and I'm sure you and I will then work out the details. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Mayor, a motion to close the public hearing now?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion closed.
Thank you.
We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks for hanging in. Thanks for hanging in.